Okay, to convene into executive session. Madam Chair, Mrs. Agostini? I move to recess public session and convene an executive session for the purpose of a discussion of student expulsions, student appeals, and a contractual matter regarding construction management at risk firms.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will cast our votes at this time. If we're all logged in, I presume we can do it electronically? No? We'll do it by hand then. If we're not all logged in, we can do it by hand. Those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Okay. By a unanimous vote, we will recess them to executive session. From executive session. My computer died, so I'm looking on with Dr. Davis. Bear with me for just a moment, please. We've just returned from executive session where we convene for the purpose of a discussion of student expulsions, student appeals, and a contract matter regarding construction management at risk firms. At this time, we will move on to our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, Colonel McLamb. And Colonel McLamb, if I can say a little bit about him clearly, he's one of our Fort Jackson partners. He is here at every school board meeting, taking notes, and going back to his superiors, and serving as an amazing liaison. So we appreciate your effort and due diligence in pulling yourself away from your own family to be here every other Tuesday night, every second and fourth, and we appreciate that and thank you for being kind enough to accept my invitation to deliver words of wisdom this evening.
Well, thank you very much, ma'am.
You have the floor.
And I don't know how inspirational this will be, but I'll do my best. My dad was born one of 10 children, raised primarily by his mother, who frequently acted as a single parent during the extended absences of his somewhat unreliable and frankly alcoholic father. He grew up in a poor family in one of the poorest rural areas of Alabama. He dropped out of school as a teenager and took a series of manual labor jobs in order to contribute to the family's welfare. In 1965, he enlisted in the United States Army with an eighth-grade education and no marketable skills. He took one of the few jobs offered. He became a combat infantryman. Over the next three decades, he served two combat tours in Vietnam and multiple peacetime tours in the Republic of Korea. He went to night school, and he passed the general education development test to get his GED. After several years in the infantry, he participated in both Army and civilian vocational training to gain the skills needed to qualify as an aircraft mechanic. Convinced of the importance of education, over a period of years, he accrued enough college degree. He attained the rank of Command Sergeant Major, the highest rank in the Army, or highest enlisted rank, before retiring in 1993. Along the way, and with the irreplaceable assistance of my mother, an extraordinary woman in her own right, who moved the family every two years, worked an endless series of entry-level jobs to supplement our Army income, and kept the family intact while my father was deployed for weeks and months at a time, my dad embedded in his children a handful of key values: loyalty to the nation, and a deep sense of gratitude for being fortunate enough to have been born a citizen of the greatest nation on the planet; the need to fulfill one's duty, even when those around you are not; a commitment to treating all people, even your enemies, with dignity and respect; a life of selfless service, placing the needs of others ahead of your own; maintaining one's honor under all circumstances; living a life of integrity; doing the harder right rather than the easier wrong, even or maybe especially when no one is looking; and finally, demonstrating personal courage in the face of both physical and moral danger. Those are the family values my dad and my mom taught me, and if I've ever failed to live up to them, the fault is entirely my own. My parents raised me right. And when I joined the Army in 1985, at the age of 18, I discovered that those values were the Army's values as well. For my family, the U.S. Army offered opportunities that could be found nowhere else. In only two generations, we have gone from a manual labor with an eighth-grade education to a colonel in the Army with three master's degrees. We've lived across the United States, from California to South Carolina, from New York to Texas. We've served in foreign countries in Asia, Central America, Europe, the Middle East, and Africa. It's almost impossible for me to imagine how different my life and the life of my children would be today if my father had been turned away from the Army back in 1965. But I don't want to paint an unrealistically rosy picture. Military life is not for everyone. The Army exists to fight and win America's wars, and a life spent in the Army is necessarily a life of sacrifice and at times danger. And the Army makes no allowances for the circumstances into which you were born. Everyone is expected to meet Army standards, even under the duress of combat. Those who do are retained and promoted; those who do not are thanked for their service and separated. It is a way of life that places great stress on soldiers and families alike. But my point to you tonight is that it's an honorable and valuable way of life, and those who have the determination and grit to make the team find themselves part of something that is personally fulfilling in a way that very few things are. The Army offers opportunities that frankly can be found in only a few other professions. Just as in 1965, today's Army is a place where disadvantaged youngsters can build a foundation for a lifetime of success and significance, whether they remain in the Army for two years or 20. But unlike in 1965, today's Army is an all-volunteer force, and the minimum standards for enlistment today are much higher than they were when my father joined the Army. In fact, today across America, only one in four Americans between the ages of 18 and 24 meet the minimum standards for military service. For more than 70% of America's youth, the opportunities afforded by military service are out of reach. Obesity, drug convictions, and the absence of a high school education disqualify the majority of today's youth from military service. We are very fortunate, I think, to live in a period of American history when voluntary military service is sufficient to meet the needs of our nation's security. No one today is compelled to bear the burden of military service. Every member of today's Army serves suis ponte. That's Latin for "of their own accord." For that, we should all be thankful. But as I address the school board and our professional head educators tonight, I would ask you to consider that when you look at policy questions such as the amount of physical education required in school, the best methods for preventing alcohol and drug abuse among our students, and the most effective ways to produce graduates who are college and career-ready, that you consider that decisions you make can open that door for the maximum number of American citizens. Doing so is in the best interest of both our students and of our nation. I don't know if I said anything inspirational tonight. I hope I have. But I'll close by offering this personal testimony. I've served in the Army for 30 years now and will retire in May, and like my father before me, I'm a combat infantryman. I've fought the enemy in close combat in Iraq and Afghanistan. I've missed many family holidays and birthdays. I've lost soldiers in combat. I've experienced both the amazing opportunities and the painful sacrifices inherent in military service for the Republic that Abraham Lincoln rightly called "the last best hope for man." And if I had my life to live over again, I would do three things the same. I'd serve the same God. I'd marry the same amazing lady. And I would join the United States Army. Now, I'll ask the Spring Valley Air Force Junior ROTC detachment to post the colors.
Present, colors.
And folks, if you would join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
March on. Colors turn. Colors, up.
Colonel McLamb, thank you very much for inspiring us this evening. It was indeed inspirational. I think a story, a one's own life story, can prove to be one of the biggest testimonies to inspire others. We appreciate that, and thank you for sharing your story. Thank you for ushering in Spring Valley so professionally in such a military-like format. And we're thankful to Spring Valley Air Force ROTC for being here this evening. Fun fact, I like fun facts, different schools have different branches of the military. This one is Air Force, others you may have Army, so it's interesting to see that we have a diversity of branches at our school, and it's nice to see them come and showcase every once in a while. So thank you so much for that. Bless you.
Madam Chair, could I have a point of personal privilege? I need you to say yes.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, yes. I'm just backing up for it. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. If you would just indulge me for a few minutes. First of all, I would like to say to our students who are here, as well as our parents and many of our faculty and staff and administration, so good to see all of you here this afternoon or this evening. I know we're doing some special recognitions, and so you're here to be supportive of your staff members and your family members as well, but this is a great opportunity for me as well. When I was a young boy, one of the things that my grandmother used to share with me, and if those of you who know me know that my grandmother raised me from age two until I graduated from college, and if she could tell us, she would still raise me until her last day. But one of the things that she used to share with me was a saying that I know all of you are familiar with if you're from the South, and that is, "Sweep around your own front door first." And I share that with my daughters and share that with them frequently as we do chores around the house, the importance of sweeping around your own front door first and clearing things up. And so in the spirit of that, as you all know that we have been dealing with some issues as it relates to the Ethics Commission and filings and so on and so forth, and so I share with our board that we all should take an opportunity to just go back and look at where we are and make sure that we were in compliance, including myself. As a first-year superintendent, started in 2017, I was not very familiar with all of the requirements of the Ethics Commission, and so I did the opportunity to do the same thing, to sweep around my front door, to make sure that I was in compliance. And what I want to share is this: On January the 8th, at the January 8th board meeting, I reaffirmed my Richland 2 promise, which includes, among other commitments, the promise to hold myself accountable before I hold others accountable, and to demonstrate honesty and integrity through actions and not words. Guided by my promise of accountability, I felt compelled to share this with you publicly. Last month, as I started working on my SEI for the 2019 year, which is for the filing of the calendar year 2018, which is due March 30th, as a part of this process, I reviewed my files submitted in 2018 for the 2017 calendar year. I discovered that I overlooked the requirements of filing an SEI within 10 days of officially becoming superintendent in Richland School District 2. Instead, I followed the practice of my predecessors and other superintendents from around the state. And essentially, what happens is, once you take official office as superintendent, you have 10 days to file your SEI. I did not know that, and I did not file those, so I amended those things once we started the process of looking over our filings. So after realizing my oversight, I quickly alerted the Ethics Commission, who had never contacted me about the oversight. I filed the appropriate amendments and paid the late fee, even though the Commission never contacted me about paying the fee. I share this information on my own free will and in an effort to remain transparent and honest with my community to maintain open lines of communications. And most importantly, it's fitting today because I also share this in front of our students, that sometimes the things that you don't know can come back to haunt you, but it's your responsibility to clear those things up immediately, so once they're brought to your attention. As I share with you, and I'll reiterate, for those here that's visiting with us and that's covering us, I reiterate that I was never contacted, I self-reported, and voluntarily paid the $100 fine for late filing without being asked or told to do so. And so that's something that I want to share publicly so that we can move and close this chapter and move forward with the daily-day operations of such an outstanding district. And thank you for that opportunity for personal privilege.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Moving on, in our agenda, we have reached item 5.1, Special Recognitions. Mrs. Ruth. I'm sorry. 4.1, approval of current agenda. Okay, thank you. Approval of current agenda. Can we get a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I make a recommendation that we approve the February 12th. Agenda is provided in our board packet.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will cast our votes at this time. Has everyone been able to cast their vote? Dr. Holmes, are you able to? Yes. Okay, she says yes. And it's hard to see like this, so just lean forward when you're saying something so I can see who's...
Yeah.
So I can see who's talking. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. Now, we have reached item 5.1, Special Recognitions. Mrs. Ruth.
I started talking and it turned off. Is that a sign? Members of the board, members of the community, our parents, we're very excited that you all are with us tonight. If you've been to a board meeting in April or May, this is what you think it is, right? This is springtime in a school district when you have lots of awards. So what I thought about tonight was, maybe, just maybe, Satani Field got it right, and we are going to have an early spring because our awards tell us that. So for our first group, I get to turn the mic over to Michelle Taylor Brown, our district's Director of Teacher Quality, and she's going to introduce our newly-certified National Board Teachers. Ms. Mackey, if you'll come up and help me with the Sandy Alice certificates. Ms. Brown.
Good evening. We would like to recognize our first-time National Board Certified Teachers, as well as our teachers who earn National Board Certification for a second time. Overall, 724 teachers have earned this achievement as a Richland School District 2 teacher. National Board Certification requires teachers to demonstrate content knowledge, reflect on student work samples, video and analyze their teaching practice, and document the impact of assessment and collaboration on student learning. Let's congratulate our new National Board Certified Teachers and our second-time National We'll start with our first-time National Board Certified Teachers. From Lake Carolina Lower Elementary, Susan Woodley. From Round Top Elementary, Monica Pendarvis. From Blackwood High, Margaret Roberson. From Ridgeview High, David Deeganhart. Also, from Ridgeview High, David Haas. From Westwood High, Martha Brown. And also, from Westwood High, Nadine Stewart-Brown. These are our first-time National Board Certified Teachers for 2018. For our next group of teachers, we have our elementary renewals. They've earned their certification for a second time. From Bethel Hanbury Elementary, Tarina Gardner. Also, from Bethel Hanbury, Laurie Robinson. Catawba Trail Elementary, Linda Phipps. Center for Knowledge, Elizabeth Allison. Center for Knowledge, Laura Goddard. Forest Lake Elementary, Heather Edwards-Bon. Jackson Creek Elementary, Leslie Bloes. From Lake Carolina Upper Elementary, Pat Earl. Also, from Lake Carolina Upper, Kelly Flores. Amy Neal, also from Lake Carolina Upper. And Darnika Rojas, from Lake Carolina Upper. From Langford Elementary, Mary Paul Hoyle. Polo Road Elementary, Brandy Floyd. Polo Road Elementary, Amanda Trower. And Sandlapper Elementary, Teresa Johnson. These are our elementary National Board Certified Teachers who've earned it for the second And our final group for renewal, we'll do a combination of middle and high school. From Blackwood High School, Yedira Trapp. From Dent Middle School, Stacy Dobbins. From Dent Middle School, Kathy Stinson. And now, we have our high school group. From Blackwood High, Jonathan Burbank. Also, from Blackwood High, Rusty Curry. Ryan Johnson, from Blackwood High. And Patrick Kelly, who's from Blackwood High as Relist the District Office. From Richland Northeast High School, Robert Hill. From Richland Northeast High School, Kiana Alicia Keels. And also, from Richland Northeast High School, Mary Catherine Rains. From Ridgeview High School, Candace Blakely. And last but not least, from Ridgeview High School, Tisha Gibbons.
I told Ms. Taylor Brown, if she did a good job, that she could have my job. Come on, come on back. Our National Board Certified Teachers certainly make us proud every day, and we continue to hold the top, if not, close to the top of the number of National Board Certified Teachers. It takes us about a month or so to make sure, but for many years now, Richland 2 has been the home of most certified teachers, National Board, in the state. So congratulations to them. Now, we have a high school student who, this is a repeat visit for him, so I'm going to ask, would Abi Manu Salish, from Blackwood High School, come forward along with his principal, Matt Sherman? Welcome back, Abi. He'll be back again, let me tell you. So tonight, we recognize him because the 2018 International Conference on Computational Science and Computational Intelligence accepted two of his papers for presentation and publication. They are being published in the IEE journal, which is the most reputed worldwide academic publication in the fields of computer science, electrical and electronic engineering. He presented his research at the International Conference, which was held in Las Vegas in December. Now, if that wasn't impressive enough, let me tell you what these papers were on. Get ready to have your mind blown. The first paper, which he was the first author, is titled "Comparison of Two Image Enhancement Techniques: Hystogram Equalization and Gamma Method," which was written in collaboration with Dr. Namiya Nahid, an associate professor at Benedict College. The second paper, because one just wasn't good enough, is also written in collaboration with Dr. Nahid, and it was called "High Frequency Emphasis Filter Instead of Homophoric Filter." And he wrote that with Dr. Nahid and two undergraduate senior students, and he is a junior in... junior? High school. Congratulations. Mr. Sherman, you can stay up front, and I'm going to ask Mr. Scott Ospelmeyer, I've been practicing that all day, Ospelmeyer, to join you up front. Mr. Ospelmeyer has been selected to be a participant in the 2019 Memorializing the Fallen Program. He is one of only 18 educators in the nation selected for this journey of a lifetime to rediscover the history of World War I. The educators, him and the others, 17 others, will embark on their journey in June and will walk in the footsteps of history, making stops at many battle sites and monuments throughout Europe. On the final day of the program, teachers will attend the 100th anniversary of the signing of the Treaty of Versailles at the Palace of Versailles. The goal for Memorializing the Fallen Program is to reinvigorate the teaching and learning of World War I in classrooms as we mark the 100th anniversary of the end of the war. It's no surprise to us that Mr. Ospelmeyer was selected for this honor. You may have heard a lot about him. Him and his students have been very involved in National History Day, and he received the first South Carolina History Day Teachers Award. If there's a history teacher that doesn't need reviving or reinvigorating, it's him, but he's just going to be that much greater and bigger when he comes back to share this amazing experience with your students. Thank you for all you do, and congratulations. For the next two awards, I would like to ask our Spring Valley football coach, Robin Bacon, and Assistant Principal Bob, Paul Dobbins, standing in for Mr. Timoney, to come up front because we are going to recognize their students, Alex Herrera and Turner Pruitt. So would Alex and Turner please come forward, if they're here? I know Turner's, Turner's right here. Alex. Okay. Alex was picked to play in the Blue-Gray Football Bowl, which was established in 1989 to help prospects from all over the country receive national exposure and increase their chances to secure scholarships to play college ball. He signed on to play for the Gamecocks, to kick for the Gamecocks, I believe. And Alex, didn't you kick the two field goals in the game? And what was the score that y'all won by? 14 to 13, I think. It's pretty close. But I say that because your two field goals made a big difference in your side coming out on the victory. So congratulations to you. Turner Pruitt was selected as a student trainer in the 2018 Shrine Bowl of the Carolinas. It's the All-Star Game between North and South Carolina. Being selected for this honor is a big deal because only two trainers from each state are chosen. Turner was one from South Carolina. She has been... She has been described as the best trainer that Spring Valley has ever had, and she'd like to continue her dream job in college. And maybe you'll be back here one day, standing by your student athletic trainer. She also plays lacrosse, because you're not quite busy enough. But congratulations to Turner and Alex. We wish y'all all the best. Now, Dr. Suber, Sabrina Suber, Principal at Richland Northeast, I'm going to need you to just camp out up there for a little while, if you can, because I'm about to roll off bunches and bunches of honors earned by your Cavaliers. The first group, I'll ask Magnet Director A.J. Chambers and Teacher Michael Branham to join Dr. Suber up front as we honor students that make up the RNE TV Live Production Group. They received the National Scholastic Association's Broadcast Pacemaker Award. So let's meet these talented producers and journalists. Please come forward as I call your name. Darius Adamson. Kenyana Argameta. Shania Bellamy. Kayla Brown. Jamie Collins. Caleb Daniels. Darius Darby. Will Davidson. Ashley Dove. Wade Fletcher. Gabrielle Greenlee. Jalen Haygood could not be with us tonight. Darius Lee. Yasmin Lee. Brandon Pendergrass. Lauren Suber could not make it tonight. Shaylan Tisdale and Rashawn Tobias. I'm going to get about half of y'all to come stand over here on this other side, if y'all don't mind, real quick. While they're getting in place for their award-winning photo, let me tell you about the Pacemaker Award. It is the oldest and most prestigious scholastic journalism award. It is unofficially compared to the equivalent of the Pulitzer Prize for high school students. These students make the show happen, from the writers, the producers, the camera operators, the on-air talent, and the reporters. They produce a 10- to 15-minute show four times a week, covering school news and local and national news. The production team submitted three of their shows to come up with winning, the winning result. So congratulations to RNE TV Live. We're going to ask y'all, if y'all will go ahead and, since it's a large group, if y'all will make your way outside and wait for your advisors to come out there, we have people taking pictures on the stairs. So if y'all, y'all can exit out that door. But Mr. Chambers and Mr. Branham, you stay. Dr. Suber, stay. Students, y'all can go out and we'll get your, that way we can get a nice group photo that y'all can put in your next award-winning show and publications. Okay. Now, the next group of students to join up front are our first-place winners from the South Carolina Press Association Contest. If you'll please come forward as I call your name, if you're here. Gracie Boyce. Is Gracie able to join us tonight? There you are, Gracie. Sorry. She is a winner of two first-place awards, both for reviews she wrote, one for the literary magazine and one for the news magazine. Lucia Brown won first place for her news feature. Kevin Mueller was not able to attend. He won first place for his sports coverage. Ella Rail won first place for Horse Sports Photo. Audrey Royal was not able to attend. She won first place for her artwork. And Jay Price, who also cannot be with us, won first place for his design work. Congratulations on wonderful first-place awards. All right, big smiles. Ready, one, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations. Dr. Suber, you can hold tight. Sorry. I told you, camp out. Now, I'd ask the Richland Northeast Athletic Director Gary Fulmer and Head Trainer Nicole Jenkins to come forward. Richland Northeast High School is the recipient of Safe Sport School Award from the National Athletic Trainers Association. The award was for meeting various standards set by the National Athletic Trainers Association that show a high school is providing the highest level of athletic training services. The various sections include having the emergency action plans in place for different types of situations, providing rehabilitation and treatment to all of our athletes, pre-participation examinations occurring for each athlete, and having all of our coaches train in CPR. We all know competitive sports are unfortunately not without risk, but we honor and thank Richland Northeast this evening for proper planning with proper equipment and personnel vital to ensuring the safety of our students as they pursue their passions. Congratulations. Now, if I could have Dr. Rachel Testin from Dent Middle School and Principal Tamela Ashford to join Ms. Mackey up front. Dr. Testin is the winner of the December Environmental Systems Research Institute, known as ESRI Video Challenge. ESRI is an international supplier of GIS software, and there's a government initiative to integrate STEM's education using GIS, which Dr. Testin has been doing in her classroom for the last six years. Dr. Testin took the 67, 60-second video challenge to show how her class uses GIS integrated in the classroom and won the national prize of all the people using the software, along with a $500 prize. The group, the organization honors teachers throughout the year for their work in integrating GIS technology into their classroom, and this award is a reflection of Dr. Testin's accomplishments in that area. That concludes special recognition. So our guest, if you are still here and you are for a special recognition, you do not have to stay for the whole meeting. You're welcome to, but you can certainly depart. And board members, if I could just have a brief few minutes to go check the overflow room area out in the cafe, to see if we have guests that I can bring back in here now that we've emptied up about half of our room. I'll be right.
We can break for just a few minutes. While we're waiting, I'd like to acknowledge Shelley Williams, who is the chairperson of the Richland Two Charter School Board. If you'd like to stand or wave, we appreciate your efforts.
And since we've got a few minutes to kill, I was going to introduce a guest of mine, Ms. Stevens, who graduated in December, and Mr. Mackey, who graduated in December from USC. But I'm looking around the room and I see other USC or Richland Two graduates. If any Richland Two students or Richland Two graduates in the room, why don't you stand and let us see how, show how proud we are of you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins and Ms. Grant as well, Mr. Grant and Ms. Hopkins as well. At this time, I think it's safe to move on to our consent agenda, item six. If we could receive a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the February 12, 2019 Board Meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. It's been moved and properly seconded. It is already a discussion. Hearing none, we'll cast our votes at this time. Do you have to do a hand vote? Ms. Sherman?
About homes? Yes.
She says yes. She says yes.
It's me again. I am actually pressing this button. I want y'all to know. I press the button. You want to put it back on the menu? Yes, don't leave it on the menu.
By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. And we'll move on to item seven, specifically 7.1, School Focus, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, this afternoon, this evening, we have our School Focus. We have the Center for Achievement, Principal Ms. Kimberly Hutchison, will share highlights from the CFA's extended day model. Ms. Hutchison.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, other distinguished members of the school board, and Dr. Baron Davis. It is indeed a pleasure to stand before you this evening and represent the Center for Achievement and its new developed extended day model. We are very appreciative of the work of Dr. Arlene Bakoudis to make this opportunity and possible, make this opportunity possible. And we are gladdened to have the support of both Dr. Davis and Dr. Marshall and Franklin to bring this into fruition for our students this year. Our students have worked hard to build a representation that's a small focus on the program that we have in place. However, we invite you to come and visit to capture the moments for yourself at this
When you walk the halls of CFA, you will be amazed at the variety of opportunities that CFA students are afforded. With our STEAM program, we have endless opportunities to explore. Our teachers prepare us to relive from learners through problem-solving inquiry and investigation. We get help with our work and extra hugs to make us feel happy every day. Our science lab is amazing, so we participate in inventions, investigations, and engineering. We also are developing a competition team that will compete with students all around the state. Have you ever wondered what it feels like to learn and have fun at the same time? I have the answer. It's called Camp Pathways at CFA. Our teachers work with us after school, both in reading and in math. Instruction is personalized so that all students feel successful. The students have designed camp pathways. Yes, you heard me correctly. The students have selected activities that they like to perform. Some of the activities were karate, dancing, art, and mindfulness. As expected, the boys wanted to get fit, so every week, we've had an instructor coach to help them get fit. Every Friday, the students here at Camp Pathways look forward to swimming. Because they believe in me, and I believe in me.
I'm glad to also have with me Mrs. Janelle Jones, who is one of our fifth-grade teachers, and also our Camp Pathways Director, and also Mrs. Makia Johnson, who is the Assistant Administrator at Center for Achievement. And at this time, do we have any questions?
Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. That's really neat to see. Also, just wanted to comment, and I know several of the board members know this, but again, I thank CFA for the success of my daughter of Caroline. Many of you know, in the first grade, she was diagnosed with dyslexia and ADHD. We had to take her out of private school. She went to CFA for fourth and fifth grade, where they taught her to learn how she could learn. She's now a junior at Spring Valley. She's in all AP and honors classes, and it's because CFA taught her to learn. Thank you so much.
Additional questions or comments from board members?
Okay. Thank you very much.
If not, thank you for your presentation. We appreciate what you do and for sharing a little piece of that world with us tonight. Thank you. Moving on to item 8.1, Public Participation. We'll begin with Mr. Gus Philpott. Gus Philpott, I'm sorry, Gus Philpott. I apologize. I've got you in the queue.
Good evening. I'm Gus Philpott.
Good evening.
39, 39 Bear New Place.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me give you the, let me give you a bit of housekeeping. Comments are limited to three minutes, and we ask that you not specifically identify a school or a student, a school or a student or anyone by name when you're commenting. Feel free to share your issue. We just ask that you not refrain from naming any students or schools or teachers or anything of that sort. Proceed.
Well, I heard most of what you said. I'm, and thank you. I'm Gus Philpott. I came tonight with a long-winded statement to follow up on my comments of two weeks ago. Tonight, I'd like to say thank you to, to the Superintendent, Superintendent Davis, because I heard your comments. I was able to hear your comments, and I thank you for speaking up. And I also thank you for the way you made your comments, and I completely accept your explanation of what happened with your filings. So everything that I researched over the last two weeks, I'm not going to read, and I thank you for handling it as you did. Many years ago, when pilots were first flying airplanes, a lot of the airplanes crashed, and the pilots looked, developed a checklist. And they figured out if they followed the checklist, fewer airplanes crashed. And if it hasn't been done yet, what I'd like to suggest is that at the HR department, they add an item on the checklist for hiring new employees that have to file statements of economic interest. And that item needs to be, have you filed your statement of economic interest? Because the whole problem that you encountered would have been avoided. So I presume that that item was not on the checklist. And as further employees are hired on different positions requiring that filing, and as school board members come and go and they have to file it, then I ask that you help them understand what the responsibility is, because a new person coming on board just can't grasp everything that has to be done. So I did a lot of homework. I learned a lot of things. I had conversations with the folks at the Ethics Commission. I found out that they don't even understand their system at the Ethics Commission, because when you file the report for the year 2017, as you mentioned Superintendent, that report is due March 30th the next year. The statement on the website for the Ethics Commission is incomplete and inaccurate. You can't figure out. So what happens is a lot of people file for the current year. And if you go in and start looking at how the filings are done, the report, there even reports filed now for 2019. even reports filed now for 2019. And the filer thinks he filed them on time because it was done before March 30th. Well, the report is due next year. The report that needs to be filed is last year's report due this year. So I've spoken with Ms. Walker, I think her name is, at the Ethics Commission, and one of the employees. Hopefully, they'll correct that. And looking around, I found the Governor McMaster filed reports incorrectly for three years. Now, I'm sure he didn't do the typing. Somebody else did the typing, but I sent him a kind little email saying, you know, maybe somebody can figure out what the rules are and file them correctly for this year. So Superintendent, I thank you, and it was handled very nicely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Next, we have Martha Eubanks. And again, as you're walking up here, just be mindful of the three-minute limit, and there's a little clock that counts down on the screen as you're talking. I think the rest is redundant.
Thank you and good evening.
Make sure the buttons aren't good.
I have a... Our last daughter, my husband and I, is a product of Richland District Two. She graduated from Ridgew High School in 2002, but she was not able to participate in the graduation ceremony because she had an altercation in April of the year that she graduated. And because she used her shoe as a weapon, she was not able to graduate and participate, and she spent some hours at Alvinett's Glen. That whole process, my husband and I went before the board and we tried to get them to change their minds, but there was a policy in place. And I appreciate that policy to this day, and so does my daughter, who has gone on to further her education and is now in LPN. We're very proud of her. But with the same standard that was held with her and not being able to participate in the graduation because of her decision to do what she did, to use her shoe as a weapon, then I hold the same standard for Richland District Two, having had two grandchildren to graduate in District Two. So I'm very appreciative of conduct. I'm very respectful of conduct that is held by adults as we look at and consider our board members. So with that, I just wanted to state that because I really, really appreciate conduct from adults. So that is all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. We're doing well on time, so I'd like to just take a half a second, well, more than half a second, but a moment to recognize Troop 900, who's here working on their citizenship and community badge. And where do you all meet? At Windsor United Methodist. We love for you to stand and be acknowledged at this time. Let's give them a hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Next person we have signed up is Mr. Jim Felder. Now is the time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, board members, and Mr. Superintendent. I'm here tonight in my role as the Chair of the NAACP Economic Development Committee. Of course, all of you know what the NAACP is all about. By the way, today is the birthday of the NAACP, 110 years ago. It has always been the organization that has protected the rights, the civil rights of individuals, not just African-Americans, but everybody. However, some years ago, we adopted another mission, and that was to protect the silver, S-I-L-V-E-R, rights of minority vendors and contractors. We received a couple complaints from some contractors saying they were not, could not get any business with Richland District Two. So I called them in, interviewed them, then I requested information from the district as to what was going on with its procurement procedures. The Superintendent and his staff responded immediately. I was pleasantly surprised to get such a quick response with the information I needed to educate me about the district so that I could get with these contractors and share with them what was going on. I must say that the district is off to a good start, and I'm pleased to report that those contractors now know what they need to do in order to get into the procurement process with the district. So I just wanted to share that with you. Now, we're going to be monitoring you to see what you're doing in the future, and we may ask more and more and more, but so far, you're off to a good start. I wanted to share that publicly and thank the Superintendent for his response in such a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felder.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
Yes, ma'am. I know we can't speak directly to members of the public, but I did want to point out that on this agenda, we have our Minority Business Section, so it would be great if someone might stick around for that presentation.
Do noted, Mr. Shad. Next on our agenda, and please correct me if I butcher your name, because no one's name deserves to be butchered, because mine is butchered all the time. Condi Sabande, and if I have mispronounced it, please correct me. That's perfect. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Superintendent, and board members. I want to thank you for this opportunity to address you. My reason for being here is to share a program with you. My name is of Zambian origin. I moved here with my family. I graduated from Ben Lippin. I'm a registered nurse serving the state. My father's been a chaplain for the state for 10 years, and my mother is a registered nurse in our special needs board, and my sister is a Richland One teacher and a reading coach. I would like to tell you about a village in Nansum, which is an intimate look into African culture. This program will be happening on March 9, 2019, at 1650 Park Circle at the Lowry Center. It'll be in the evening. It is kid-friendly, and we're asking for your support. A village in Nansum will provide you with an interactive glimpse into African culture unlike any experience you have had. This unique event is the first of its kind in Columbia, South Carolina. I would like to also add that this will be our fourth annual. We'd like to invite you to bring your family and come abroad with us as we travel to Africa without leaving the Conference of Columbia, South Carolina. Allow us to whisk you away to the motherland as we tantalize your taste buds with exquisite and delectable tastes of Africa during our cuisine sampling part of the program. Scampers across countries such as Zambia, Nigeria, Liberia, Ghana, Gambia, and Cameroon. Your mind will be captivated as we share the oral traditions of storytelling, which are a common knit thread among the people of the land. Relax and allow your body to get lost in the rhythms as we incorporate traditional sounds of the African villages through our cultural dance presentations. All our storytellers have lived in the listed various countries in Africa and now reside in Columbia, South Carolina. All have come together in a cohesive unit to showcase their culture. Graciously lending their support are people like, just to name a few, Faida, Ms. Kim, Tona Oke, Lady G, my sister Lu Tsungu Sabande Sengwinji, and myself. Our goal for A to Z and our Village and Nansum program is to leave a lasting and burning imprint of our beautiful continent in everyone's mind. As we say in Zambia, tizamwane. You can find more information on our website, ATOZED.org. That's A-T-O-Z-E-D dot org. The same, you can search on Facebook, and you will find our information, and you can email us at america dot two dot Zambia at gmail dot com. And I also sent some flyers up there for everyone to have. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We do have your flyers. Everyone has one. Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, we have Marisolyn, or Rissy, as she's affectionately called, McDonald.
Hi, and thank you, board members and Superintendent Davis, for allowing me to address you this evening. My name is Rissy McDonald, and I am an eighth grader at Ditt Middle School. Honestly, I thought my first time addressing you would be in reference to the district's dress code, which I believe is problematic in the age of movements like me, too. However, I am not speaking about that tonight. I would like to share these thoughts that I wrote after returning home from the last school board meeting held. During the board meeting, I observed one board member make it a point to mention what an honor it was to serve with three other members before giving her remarks, making it easy to assume that she didn't feel the same about the other members. It reminded me of some bullying tactics used in elementary school, where a child would intentionally exclude others to make them feel ashamed, embarrassed, or out of place. But that's not all. Following the meeting, I was merely feet away from an incident that has since been widely publicized. I won't go into the details, because you all know, but during the incident, I witnessed an adult, a member of the school board, conduct herself in a way that students sometimes are suspended or even expelled for. As I strive to become more civically engaged, I look forward to attending school board meetings and learning more about the work being done to ensure equality education for my peers and for me. I am asking you all to remember that for us young people, we hear what you say, but it is what you do that leaves the greatest impact on us. During the last meeting, I went from feeling inspired by the grace and professionalism of one board member who was receiving criticism to very shortly after being disappointed in some of the adults who are designated as leaders of this district. We all get to choose, and if our choices lead to the wrong outcome, we can make new choices. I am asking you today, for the sake of students and others who expect you to lead, to think about the choices you make, not only when you are sitting at the front of this room, but when you do not know we are watching. And when you make a poor choice, own it and do better. Thank you. I look forward to speaking with you about the dress code.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Madam Chair, I wanted to let you know, I think that they removed the sign-up sheet early, but I did want to sign up. They said that the executive session had already begun, but had not.
I hear you, but we have a special request that says on our instructions for signing up that you have to sign up before the board meeting. There are other people who's also indicated that they wanted to speak tonight, but they couldn't because they couldn't get here in time before the board meeting to sign up, and that's according to board policy. So you're welcome to come back at the next board meeting and share your comments.
Well, I think that's inappropriate, given the situation with so many people, and I think that that's an intentional act on behalf of the school.
You're out of order, Ms. Meisner. We've explained to you nicely the policy. You're out of order.
Yeah, and I wanted to explain the rest of the situation. They scheduled a six o'clock meeting for other people.
Move yourself from the podium. There are other people here who also wanted to speak, and they can't speak tonight because they didn't get here before the board meeting. So we're not being cruel or unusual. We're just following the policy, and that is something that we're trying to strictly adhere to going forward, because we're trying to be as ethical and policy-abiding by as we possibly can. Thank you. That completes the public participation portion of this meeting, and we will move on to item 9.1. Mr. Shad, and before we get... Can I just take a point of personal privilege to acknowledge my family, my bonus parents, my bonus siblings, my child? If you could just wave. I know you don't want to stand up, but I know there are a lot of people here who have better things they could be doing than being here tonight, but I don't see my family here often, and the fact that they're here means a lot to me, and I appreciate that. So thank you. Okay, Mr. Shad, I'm sorry to have interrupted you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. With regard to the legislative update, I wanted to share with you all that a number of board members traveled to Washington DC for the National School Board Association's Advocacy Institute, where we were able to speak amongst ourselves across the nation. I believe it's about 9,000 school board members along with the association, and we were preparing to speak to members of our delegation from South Carolina, to meet them at Capitol Hill and discuss concerns that we had and celebrations that we wanted to share with them with regard to what we are doing here on the local level. This is something that we do every year, and I particularly was interested in doing it because I wanted to develop those advocacy skills so that we can obviously bring that back here, so we can speak to our General Assembly. And that's a great segue into our legislative update. For those who may not know, there is what is being called an education reform bill that was introduced by House Speaker Jay Lucas. It is Act H3759. It's titled "South Carolina Career and Opportunity and Access for All Act." I would encourage you all to look at this bill, and we also have, and it should have been in our information, but there was a great webinar that was put on by the State School Boards Association, and I believe Ms. Mackey attended that webinar. But it summarizes it, and the reason why you might want to get the summary is that it's 82 pages. There are a lot of folks that are not happy about it. For example, it talks about increasing teacher pay, which is excellent. That's what we want. However, it is tied to performance, and we know, we've heard through the years, this merit-based pay, it comes, it gets pushed back down, and then it rises up again. They're talking about school takeover, essentially creating an education czar, czar, which is another position created. It talks about the, essentially, as of right now, taking over school boards, removing school board members, and this will be by the governor. And it talks about... Well, let me say this. We know we have the school report card. And in this school report card, you're going to have your high flyers, top 10 percent. You're going to have, for the lack of a better word, the average folks, which is where the bulk of our school districts and our schools are, and then you have a lower tier, the bottom 10 percent. If schools or school districts remain in that bottom 10 percent for three consecutive years, they can be closed. And then those schools can be closed and then start back up as a charter school. I think we know what's happening here. So I would encourage you all, in terms of advocacy, talk to your local delegation, make sure that you are watching, that you're monitoring. Now, of course, as it is with bills, there can be amendments that can be attached to it. They're in subcommittee now, and they're taking a very good, hard look. So this is the first salvo in terms of reform for our educational system. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Shad? I have a few. And just as a disclaimer, I did attend the webinar, virtually attended, and we talked about it. That's how he knows that I attended. But I'm sure there are other board members who attended as well, so I'm not going to single myself out as being on the board. Mr. Manning?
I think as Mr. Shad said, an 80-page bill, or 80-plus-page bill, there's certainly some things that are good in there. I think some of the accountability measures for us as school board members, even though I know there are some that may not be popular, but I do think we, as school board members, need to be held accountable for our responsibilities to the public. And there are some things in there that I do think are good, that would hold us as school board members to a higher standard across the state, not just in any one school district. And I do think, in some cases, financially, school districts that have under 1,000 students, I don't even know how they financially survive with less than 1,000 students with the per-pupil basis. So I think there are some things that... I know Mr. Shad had some comments. I just want to make sure that we understand that that's not a Richland Two school board stand, that that's an individual stand on some of the issues in that bill, because there are some things that I think have some merit that are in there as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Are there other questions or comments regarding the legislative update? Okay, I was trying to find...
I do.
Right ahead, Mr. Shad.
The comments by James Shad does not reflect the entire board. I'm only one member of the board, and I provided a legislative update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Are there any other questions or concerns for Mr. Shad at this time? If not, I do want to thank you for your report and share with the public at this time that our own Superintendent was kind enough to provide a brief as such, although a brief in 80-something pages is kind of an... in 80-something pages is kind of an oxymoron, but he was able to provide a brief for us and summarize that a good bit, so that was helpful for us. And this is an ongoing process. If this bill passes, it will be in effect within, you know, several weeks to several months, certainly before the end of May. And if it's amended and has some revisions, then some portion of it may be enacted, or it may be repealed, we don't know yet, but it is something that is an active hotspot, and we appreciate you sharing that, Mr. Shad. Any other questions or comments? If not, we will move along to Item 10, specifically 10.1. Would like to receive a motion at this time with regard to student appeals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that with regard to students 2, 6, 7, 11, and 12, that we deny the appeals. And with regard to students, well, student 5, Blythewood Academy. And for student 10, Blythewood Academy with Laredex Services.
Does that complete your motion, Mr. Shad?
Yes.
Will there be a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. It's been motioned and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will wait to see how the motion appears on screen, and, Mr. Shad, you can verify that before we cast our votes, if that's okay with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We've got students who are scratching their heads, since we've got a few seconds here. What happens is usually when the vote seems to be, when it's a complicated motion, or appears to be complicated, the maker of that motion will study it to make sure that it's as he presented, and if it is, then we'll cast our votes.
It is correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Have all those, okay, Dr. Holmes, we're going to need for you to raise your hand, so we can all do that. If all members who wish to respond in the affirmative, we can all raise our hands. I think Dr. Holmes' vote is not showing up. Not sure what button she's pushing, but she insists that she is pushing it, and we believe By a vote of 7 to 0, the motion unanimously passes. Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to student number one, I move that we deny the appeal.
Mr. Shad has made a motion to deny the appeal of student number one. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes at this time. By a vote of 4 to 3, the motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad?
With regard to student number three, I move that we, I recommend Blythewood Academy. That's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? By a vote of, oh, can you send that again?
Third time's the charm. Yep.
She didn't capture my vote. It said not present. It said not present. I don't think I have that option. Have we all, have all of our votes been cast? Mrs. Sherman? Dr. Holmes, Elkins Johnson, and Caution Parker, if you'd cast your votes again when By a vote of 3 to 4, the motion fails. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning?
I make a motion that we deny the appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Agostini. It's been motioned and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will cast our votes at this time. By a vote of 4 to 3, the motion carries. Mr. Shad, would you like to?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, with regard to student number four, I move that they attend Blythewood Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails. Is there an alternative motion?
Second.
Do you want to restate your motion, Mr. Shad? Just for continuity?
Yes, ma'am. As to student number four, I move that they attend Blythewood Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes at this time with regard to student number four. Do you have all of our votes registered? Okay. By a vote of 5 to 2, the motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad?
With regard to student number eight, I move that we deny the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will cast our votes at this time. Yes, sir. Do you have all of our votes registered, Mrs. Sherman? By a vote of 6 to 1, the motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad?
With regard to student number nine, I move that they attend Blythewood Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, didn't like my vote.
Okay. Okay. By a vote of 6 to 1, the motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
With regard to the addendum.
Before we get to the addendum, Mr. Shad, can you verify that we included student five? I think we did. If you don't mind, Mr. Shad, just a moment.
Yes, ma'am. We did.
We did. Thank you, Mr. Shad.
Yes, ma'am. All right, with regard to the addendum, I move that students two and three attend Blythewood Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, I'm not done with the motion.
Okay. I apologize. If you withdraw your-
And with regard to student number four, that we deny the appeal. Thus ends my motion.
Do you have that, Mrs. Sherman, or do you need from the restated? If there's no discussion, we can all cast our votes at this time, please. Is that right, Mr. Shad? Is the motion accurate on screen?
It is.
Okay. And we'll cast our votes at this time. By a vote of 7 to 0, your motion carries. Mr. Shad?
Madam Chair, with regard to student number one in the addendum, I move that they attend Blythewood Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? By a vote of 4 to 3, the motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad?
With regard to student number five, I move that they attend Blythewood Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
We definitely have a motion. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes at this time. By a vote of 5, oh, I'm present. Didn't get me? What should I do? Are you going to resend it? Okay, she's got, everyone's going to resubmit their vote. By a vote of 6 to 1, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Shad. We will now move on to the next portion of our agenda, which is Item 10.2, a contractual matter regarding construction management at risk firms. Can we get a motion at this time?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the construction contracts reviewed with the board in executive session, and to authorize the superintendent to execute the contracts on behalf of the district as follows. Contractor number one, Contract Construction, Inc. Contractor number two, Gilbane Building Company. Contractor number three, Harper Corporation. Contractor number four, H.G. Reynolds Company. Contractor number five, MB Con Construction Company. And contractor number six, Thompson Turner Construction Company.
Thank you, Mr. Manning, for your motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning?
I just want to, again, I know I've said this a few times, a few different meetings, but again, thank the public for the overwhelming support for the bond, for the safety and security of our students and our staff. It's very meaningful and a huge step for this district to have this trust from the public in the regard to the bond, so thank you very much for the opportunity for us to do the work that we need to for our students and our staff. Thank you.
If I could piggyback on that, Mr. Manning, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Dr. Davis, his executive staff, and the people who work with him to execute that bond. It is not our money, it's not board money, it's actually the superintendent and the staff that oversee that. I appreciate their transparency, I appreciate their willingness to try to get, you know, all people involved in that process, and to make sure it's a transparent process, so I just want to give you some kudos, Mr. Superintendent. I know it wasn't just you, but that is a process that you all are overseeing, not board members, and I want to appreciate, I appreciate what you've done. And I want to appreciate. I appreciate what you've done, and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions with regard to the contractual matter regarding construction management at risk firms? Hearing none, we'll cast our vote at this time. Does the motion look accurate to you, Mr. Manning?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you had a pop up yet, Lindsey? It's not popping up. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hands. And I can't see whose hands are up. Are any hands down? Those opposed? Those are. Okay. There are by a vote of six in favor and one abstention, the motion carries. At this time, we will move on to item 11, beginning with a policy. Item 11.1, proposal of a policy that Dr. Davis will describe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we actually will be bringing before you this evening three policies for action where we're asking for your approval of policy revisions. We have policy proposals to revisions to policy EF Food Services. ECEB Buildings and Grounds, which is a new policy, as well as revision to policy BD, Board Organization. BD Organization of the Board. Mr. Anderson will address the first two policies, followed by Dr. Marshall and Franklin. Should you have any questions regarding these policies, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you, Ms. Mackey, members of the board. I believe you all have the policy. So, any questions I can answer, or do you want to get a motion first, Ms. Mackey?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve policy revision EF Food Services as recommended by district administration.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, please.
Mrs. Agostini.
I was contacted by a constituent yesterday who's concerned about this policy. And how will the district pay for these free lunches? Can you share that with us?
The free lunches.
Are the lunches that we're providing the students?
Thank you.
Correct. We get federal reimbursement dollars for all children that are free or reduced. If a child is, per policy, I believe it's on page two, the first paragraph, the district will not deny any child who a principal believes is improperly nourished a free lunch, milk, or other food. We do get federal reimbursement, and there's a way, per the Healthy Hunger Free Food Act, where principals can qualify a child for free lunch. And I have this form here that we're actually sharing with the principals, again, as a reminder tomorrow at our key leaders meeting. But that, the money that we don't receive for, if you're a paid student, if you have debt, that's all comes out of our general fund, has to supplement our food service account. Our food service account is an enterprise fund. It's a single fund that supports the food service operation. But when that balance gets to a point, we have to supplement that with the general fund. We have a healthy food service account right now, so we're not in any concern. But we do want to continue to make sure that we get the federal reimbursements, and we have children and their families and parents making sure that they take care of the debt. But we are, we, as y'all remember, we updated our practice earlier this year. Where all children, even if they do have a debt, we do allow them some grace period. And we eliminated the alternative meal. Thank you, Ms. Mackey. So, they do get the same meal. But that's a long-winded answer, Ms. Agostini. But at the end of the day, if the students do not pay, make their obligation, and the federal reimbursements do not come back, the district does have to pay that debt off.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
You're welcome.
Is there any additional discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a statement as well. In addition to that, I appreciate Ms. Agostini asking that question. Concerns about whether or not we are in compliance if we use general fund money to cover those meals for those students. And I've checked with Mr. Anderson and Dr. Malin, and we're sure that we are in compliance if we use general fund money to cover that gap for those students who could not or have not been able to pay for their meals. We will not, in this district, abuse that policy and just allow students to run up astronomical amounts of debts. However, as a superintendent, as well as educators in our district, and I think our board stands on this as well, we also will not allow students that we have been, that we have identified to be malnourished to not eat. So, that will not take place in this district. We have instructed our principals. Our principals would do a very diligent job to assess that situation and determine the length of which that will, we will allow that to take place. However, we're not in the business of taking food off of students' plates or taking trays out of students' hands, or knowing that a student is not being fed to meet some sort of quality, some sort of standard of some concern of whether or not we are in violation of a policy. We are clear. We have experts here in this district who assure us that we have the ability to do so, along with several school districts in this state that are also following the same regulations. So, I just want to assure our public that we are not doing anything that is not in compliance with federal or state laws, or that we're not able to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Additional questions or comments about this policy? Hearing none, we'll cast our vote. Shall we do it electronically, Mrs. Sherman? Okay. Mine popped up. Does everyone popped up? I'm sorry. By vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Item 11.2, Dr. Davis.
Mr. Anderson.
The policy is presented last time, policy ECECB. As a reminder, it was a combination of three policies to form this new policy that addresses our buildings and grounds. Happy to have a motion and then answer any questions.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve policy revision EC.ECB Buildings and Grounds as recommended by district administration.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second? Dr. Caution Parker, it's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. At this time, we will move on to item 11.3, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Marshall and Franklin stand to answer any questions of a previously presented proposed board policy revision. Policy BD Organization of the Board.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I make a recommendation that we approve policy revision BD Organization of the Board as recommended by district administration.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Dr. Caution Parker.
I like the policy. It's okay. I just have a problem with the first paragraph. I think it's the third line up, for cause. Is there any way we could be more specific regarding that? Also, with the new bill that's on the table right now, there's a section in the very back, you know, regarding this same issue. I mean, there's a list of the reasons why a board member can be removed. And that list is in the back. I think it's, I forgot what page it's on. But anyway, on there is a list for the governor to consider when looking at this policy. And I think I would like, I guess, to see more, something more specific than just cause. Because it could be five of us don't like one, and we just vote them out. I mean, you know. So, I think we need to look at that, that terminology. Cause needs to be addressed. That's just my opinion.
Any other questions or concerns?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
Dr. Caution Parker shares my same concern with regard to not just the for cause in that first paragraph, but it continues to say, comma, as determined by the board. As it, this current revision is before us after being properly moved and seconded. We do not know what just, what for cause means. It has not been defined as determined by the board. We are unsure of what the process is. There's no there's no procedure that is attached to this policy revision. When you use a term for cause, in some arenas, such as employment, if you have an employee that is up for cause, there are, that person is entitled to notice and opportunity to be heard in terms of due process. And Dr. Franklin, I don't know if you know if that is the case as it is right now. I know that this was done by our attorney. Well, let me ask you this as well. Our attorney put in this revision, but who initiated this?
This was not the request of the board.
It was by a request of the entire board?
That we revisit policy BD.
Okay. All right. And my concern, Madam Chair, and members of the board, is that we need to be mindful of the implications of this. Is this reactionary to recent events? We need to be concerned about future boards if this goes through in tagging them with this responsibility. As I understand it, a revision like this has never come before the board in terms of removal of an officer. Since, and I'm concerned whether there's a slippery slope, especially without having some guidance on what just cause is. Dr. Franklin, do you know if any other school district has this type of policy?
In terms of the language about removing a board member, I'm not certain.
For just cause, okay. Do you know if any other entities in the state of South Carolina with regard to their officers have a just cause provision as determined by the board?
That I'm not certain that I can check.
Okay. And would you agree with me, Dr. Franklin, that it does not say that any notice or opportunity to be heard is in this revision?
Right. And that would be procedural, which would come with an accompanying administrative rule.
Okay.
That would outline the procedure.
And we do have that?
Just states the policy. No, sir.
Do we have an administrative rule?
No, after the approval of a policy, then we develop an administrative rule.
Okay. So, let me understand this. So, if this passes, then the administration will create a rule for the board to determine whether they can remove a board officer. Is that correct?
The administrative rule is developed and then brought back to the board, or shared with the board.
Okay. Now, I would note, as Dr. Caution Parker mentioned, and I'll keep my personal opinion as to the Reform Act that is in the House right now. But it does state, and I'm looking at page 19, that the governor, if this passes, may remove a member in a case involving, and we don't have this in this policy revision, but it does at least give some guidance on things, fraud, misappropriation of funds, and this is for board members, to remove a member, not an officer, but remove a member. Nepotism, violation of election or procurement laws. And then there's another section that says if they're found guilty, after notice and opportunity to be heard, there's also more, malfeasance, misfeasance, incompetency, absenteeism, conflict of, conflicts of interest, misconduct, persistent neglect of duty in office or incapacity. Are any of these potential factors included in this revision, Dr. Franklin?
And that would be determined by the board, because the way the policy is, the proposed policy is verded, it says for cause as determined by the board.
Okay.
That would be, the causes would be determined by the board.
And also, if this goes through, then what this means is that we are judge and jury of ourselves as it relates to our officers. Is that right, Dr. Franklin?
Correct.
Okay. And so, I think Mr. Manning mentioned this at the last board meeting that with regard to it being essentially a supermajority where you would need five votes if this passed. I think he even had a concern that it couldn't be where perhaps there's just a personality conflict amongst board members, or someone didn't like how a vote went. And so, they decided to remove that person as an officer for, you know, those reasons. Nothing in this revision sort of insulates people from that. It's just whatever the board comes up with. Is that correct?
As the draft is written, it is determined by the board.
Okay. Now, I also have a concern, Madam Chair, and fellow board members, is that essentially when we say just cause, that means that while the board member was conducting, as I interpret it, conducting or serving as an officer, that whatever these items are, whatever the board comes up with, that the board can consider. You know, what does just cause mean? Is it failing to file reports with the EBITDA Commission, and there's a consequence to that? Failing to pay fines, there's a consequence to that? Alleged to have committed a criminal offense, there's a consequence to that. An allegation, but still a consequence. Is that something that the board would potentially consider? And even while serving as an officer, refusing to carry out the duties of that officer and the impact that that could have on the district. These are items that could be up for consideration. And so, I just wanted to make sure that that was understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Mrs. Agostini?
Madam Chair, thank you. I just wanted to point out what Mr. Shad was talking about in terms of the governor's removal was the removal so that he can have the authority to remove somebody from the board. This policy is not removing somebody from the board that we're looking at. This is just, this policy is removing an officer from their official, their officer chair, vice chair, or secretary position. So, the member would still remain on the board, just not as an officer. Thank you.
Additional questions or concerns, Dr. Caution Parker?
Just, I just would like to state. I have a problem. I agree with the policy in one way, but I have a major, major problem how this all came about. It's a it's, I'm just going, y'all know me, those of you that know me. It's almost like a mob mentality. Someone did something, so we're going to pounce. This is how we're going to do. And I have a real problem with that. I think if we're going to do this policy, then we need to have a stipulation as to when it goes into effect. It cannot be retroactive. It's got to be forward. We've got to be forward. It's got to be proactive. I think if we could do that, I can support it 100%. But I don't, I know I cannot support it the way it is because of how I feel, how this whole thing came about. And I have a problem with that, a major problem with that. And I'm just speaking for myself.
Additional questions or concerns, Mr. Manning?
Madam Chair, I just want to say, I think that the idea behind this policy, there's, I mean, there could be tons of causes why the board, who also self elects our officers. So, we as a board select who those officers are. And the board selects those officers to carry out certain roles and responsibilities, including sometimes, board chair is the spokesperson for the board. If we have the potential of a board chair who may speak antithesis to the majority of the board because of an issue that they feel the board because of an issue that they feel strongly about that's in an opposite direction of what the majority of the board feels, that could be potentially a breach of the role and responsibility of that position where they are speaking out in a way that is not for the board. I'm not saying that's what's happened here. I'm saying that's a potential reason why they may do that. There may be a board chair or a vice chair who has absentee issues, who cannot carry out their duties with fidelity over a period of time. And if somebody doesn't show up and they're in a board officer role, I think we need the opportunity as a board to then remove an officer so that we can put an officer in place, not because of personal issues. I mean, we do have a concern for that. I think the super majority helps me to get more comfortable with the idea that it would be the super majority of the board, not even a simple majority for those reasons. There could be a lot of reasons. I think for me, the idea of this policy coming up now is not so much around any individual on this board, but I think it's made us review the policy and realize that there's a gap in the policy, in my opinion, that needed to be addressed. It's not about any individual, not about a specific cause that's in front of us. It's an idea that are brought about, just as Dr. Davis said, and I do appreciate him stepping up and looking at ethics, that he went back and reviewed and found out, you know what, I have a gap that needs to be corrected. We have a gap that needs to be corrected, in my opinion. Purpose, not a mob mentality about any individual. I think it's something, I mean, we, we don't have cause for why we select officers. I mean, we could remove cause and say there's no cause for why we remove an officer. If the super majority of the board feels like they need a change in an officer who represents us as a board and us as a district, that could be so numerous, I think it could be difficult to identify that. So that's just my opinion here on this particular issue.
Additional questions or comments? Dr. Caution Parker?
I agree with Mr. Manning on a lot of the comments that he made. However, I can support this if it's effective July 1, when we elect new officers. Not now, not in the middle of the year like this, but when we elect new officers. I can support this 100%. But again, that's just how I feel, and I'm almost 70 years old, and I feel the way I feel. And that's it. Thank you.
Additional questions or caution, or questions? Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker.
And I guess my only statement, not to be contrarian, but we, we've never done a policy that starts, I mean, we've always done policy, every policy we've ever done starts immediately. We've brought up before pushing policies to start down the road, not right away, and we have always been told consistently that the policy goes into place as soon as it's voted on by the majority of the board and goes forward. So I'm not sure, you know, why we have a policy that now will be different than every other policy we've ever instituted on this board.
Additional questions or concerns, Mr. Shad?
Dr. Franklin, I understand that if this policy goes into place tonight, we would still be waiting on an administrative rule to be created by the administration.
The policy goes into place once the board votes on it.
Right, but I mean, in terms of administrative rule that would be associated with it.
Right, the administration would develop an administrative rule in terms of the procedure.
So the policy would go into place, the administrative rule would still be left to be created. How long would you, if it goes through, and I know we're speaking hypotheticals, but if it goes through, how long would you anticipate that the administrative rule would be put into place? That's it?
Or the board can choose to delay the policy until the administrative rule is drafted. We're still having discussion, though. I've got you. I've got you.
What you're saying, even if it carries, we could make another motion to have it delayed pending the administrative rule. Is that right?
Right, making an agenda item for another meeting.
Okay.
You have several options. You can, the motion can, the motion can carry. You can make another motion that, that's, that addresses that motion as well, or if the motion fails, someone can make another motion. Those are your options. Are there any other questions or comments with regard to, thank you, Mr. Shad, with regard to this policy? If not, I do, just because of recent events, I have made sure that I am a stickler about policy now, and I have become a policy guru. With regard to the Section B of our Board Governance, there are sections on board member conduct, sections on board member conflicts of interest, organization of the board, the administrative rule that is attached to this, and there are specific duties of the chairman, specific duties of the vice chair, specific duties of the secretary. There are also violations that, that board members can violate with regard to Code of Ethics that is also policy BCA. So if we're going to have a policy like that, I would, I would greatly shun having a nebulous policy. If you want to have a policy that tightens things up a bit, I've got that, but having something that just says it's not just cause, Mr. Shad, it's cause. I know for state and federal agencies, I know there's policy, because I've worked in the corporate world before I got here, there are policies where people can lose their funding or their job for cause. But there's also an index that tells you what cause is, and you know precisely what your violation is. Now, to Mr. Manning's point, if it comes to board members in the future and you want to have, make sure that there's a checklist to make sure that they are in compliance with, with all the things on the checklist before you vote them in, that's something that's, you know, a bit of self policing as well. But his point was that, you know, we vote officers with no kind of criteria. If you want to have criteria that's already in place in one of our policies and you want to start making sure that we are abiding by that, that's fine as well. But having a policy that just says for cause is a recipe for disaster, because it's very easy to have something that passes and you vote people out just because you don't like them. There is a motion on the floor at this time. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes with regard, and, and with regard to this motion as it is, without cause, with any, with no specifications as it is. Okay. That's your motion, Mr. Manning? Okay.
I do want to say just one other thing, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I must say, I'm a little bit disappointed. We had this policy in front of us last time, and there were no comments asking, and we had it for two weeks, there were no comments asking for any adjustments or changes. Administration has repeatedly asked us to please try to give changes that we want to see, or things that we want to see, so that we're fair to everybody about what we want those changes to be. I think we had time to present those, and I, I mean, I appreciate the opportunity we have at a chance at any point as board members to do that, but I would hope, and that's not just with this policy, but with others, that when we see things that we, where we want major changes, that we try to present those ahead of time so that board members and administration truly have a, a real opportunity to digest those changes and maybe give us more of an opportunity, potentially want to agree with those, given some time to think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. And to your point, this is not the first policy that we've ever had to take back and revise upon second reading. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Franklin. We've had other policies that we've read into and read deeper meaning and had to take those back after second reading and revisit them. So it's not the policy that we've had. We've had, this has been, we've had constituents and people asking us questions, so I'm not comfortable passing a policy that we can't defend definitively. Cause is, there's nothing that, anything goes. So this is not the first policy that we've ever had to take back after the second reading, tweak it, make it a little bit tighter so that it's defensible, and then take it back to a third reading. It's not the first time we've done that. At this time, hearing no more comments, we will cast our votes. Do you want to do hand votes, or are you waiting for something to pop up? Okay. We're going to try one more time. Well, hold on, maybe so. Okay. If it's not working, all those in favor of the policy as is, please indicate by raising your right hand. Are those three hands raised? Okay, three in favor? All those who are opposed, please signify by raising your left hand. I'm sorry, right hand. The same hand, right hand. By a vote of three to four, the policy fails. The motion fails. Moving on to item 12, specifically 12.1. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Price will come before you to address any questions that you may have, but he's bringing before you some information regarding our weather makeup days and asking for approval for a waiver. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Good evening, Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the board. Tonight I bring to you for your consideration a waiver request from the Office of the Superintendent. As a quick review, you may recall that for the dates of September 11th, 12th, 13th, and 14th earlier this school year, Richland 2, along with many other school districts, were part of a mandatory shutdown by Governor McMaster in preparation for Hurricane Florence. Fast forward about one month, and we had Hurricane Michael pay us a visit, and we had to cancel school in anticipation of severe weather on October 11th. So that's a total of five days that were missed in the first semester in the months of September and October earlier this school year. After, because those days were, were canceled early on in the school year, we had the option to explore some different options with our makeup days. Now, every year when we approve our calendar, we designate a minimum of three makeup days, and we usually target those in the spring because of severe weather that often comes with the winter. For the past several years, we've had inclement weather in the months of October in the forms of hurricanes and floods and other natural disasters that have come our way. So we started designating a fourth day during fall semester. Well, this year, because of the early incidents, we had the opportunity to think a little more outside of the box. And so we surveyed members of our Faculty Advisory Council and our Parent Advisory Council about different options for instituting three of those makeup days. And by popular vote from both groups, we decided to use October 18th, October 19th, and December 21st to make up three of those days that were canceled. October 18th was initially a district-wide in-service day. October 19th was a, a student holiday, and December 21st was the Friday before the two-week winter break that we had this year. That was, that actually designated as the first day. So winter break did not begin until the following Monday. So a review of our new school calendar law, that the local school board of trustees by a majority vote may waive no more than three days according to the South Carolina Code of Laws as it relates to school closings due to snow, extreme weather conditions, or other disruptions. That law goes on to state, more specifically, that the first three days that are canceled of school are required to be made up. Days numbered four, five, and six, the local school board has the authority to waive those to be made up. Anything that's missed beyond six would require a vote from the State Board of Education for those days to be waived. So again, first three, we have to make those up. Four, five, and six, you have the authority to waive those. Anything beyond six could only be waived by the State Board of Education. So things to consider with this waiver request, those five days that we missed were in Semester One. Our three days that we made up were in Semester One. The two days remaining would have to be made up in Semester Two. The potential for more inclement weather days could still lie ahead. Anyone who's been a member of the South Carolina residency for your life, you know that our weather can be unpredictable from time to time. Last week was a perfect example. On Saturday, we had coats and gloves and hats, and two days prior to that, we had students in shorts, t-shirts, and flip flops in school. So our three remaining dates for makeups in this school year calendar would be February 18th, which is President's Day, which is Monday, our teacher work day that's designated for March 15th, and a teacher work day of June 7th, which is a Friday. We have already designated that February 18th will not be used as a makeup day at this time, so that leaves us for what we have left on the calendar that would not interrupt spring break or Memorial Day, would be the March 15th, the June 7th day. So with that said, we are making a recommendation that the remaining two days that were missed because of potential hurricane weather in the fall of 18, we bring that to the board and ask that you consider waiving those final two days.
Madam Chair? I'd like to make a motion that we waive the remaining two makeup days by cause.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes at this time. And would you like for us to do it electronically or by hand? Oh, it came up, okay. Well, they've come up before, but they don't always register. If you don't get us all, then we'll just do it by hand. Got everybody? Dr. Holmes, too? Okay. By vote of seven to zero, item 12.1 is unanimously passed.
Thank you.
Now we'll move into a period of new business, item 13, and just take it away, Dr. Davis, the whole section.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have before you new business, no action requested. We are bringing before you just information regarding proposals to additional, to our policies. So we're bringing policy revisions to EEA transportation, EEAC bus scheduling and routing, EEAE bus safety program, which is a new policy, EEAEC student conduct on buses, which is also new, EEFA extracurricular activity on buses. And the last policy that's being proposed is, I'm sorry, the next policy is EEAG student transportation and private vehicles, which is new, and a policy revision, information regarding BEDB, board agenda. Mr. Anderson will address the policies regarding transportation, and Dr. Franklin will be ready to address any policy proposals regarding board agenda. Mr. Anderson?
Before you start, I'm sorry, Dr. Davis, I'd like to insert a point of personal privilege, to take a point, rather. I have this note here, and it was read to me, and I forgot to share it. Everyone who's speaking, please make sure you speak directly into the mic, and they're probably talking about me because I don't talk loudly enough. And we also have hearing assistance devices if anyone needs it, if anyone's having trouble hearing, even if we're speaking directly into the mic, just let us know, and we'll be happy to share those with you. Sorry, Mrs. Roof. Mr. Anderson?
I'm back. So we've got six policies that I'll be reviewing. First one is transportation. It's a, basically a revision and just cleaning up some of the redundancies that were in the policy. Any questions that I can answer on policy EE transportation?
Any questions, board members, comments? If not, feel free to carry on.
All right, thank you. The next policy is bu, policy EEAC, bus scheduling and routing. The only change here is it strikes, Richland, strikes county from Richland School District 2, and says, as the word routes for double and triple routes will be used if required. Any questions on policy bus scheduling and routing?
You can just keep going if there are questions. You can just keep going.
Bus safety program, policy EEAE. This is the policy regarding safety on our buses and primarily the safety of our drivers, making sure that our drivers are trained properly and have passed a physical exam, alcohol and drug testing, to make sure that they are driving, they're acceptable drivers for our buses. This is a new policy. Any questions about this policy regarding our bus safety program? All right. The next policy is policy EEAC, student conduct on buses. Once again, another new policy. This policy basically is, explains what happens on a school bus, and it's an extension of the classroom, and the discipline then goes back to, the school is responsible for the discipline. Mr. Smith has reviewed this policy as well, and it is in line with our current conduct and discipline policies. Any question about the student conduct on buses? All right, thank you. The next one is extracurricular activity buses. I know Dr. Davis said on, but it's, it's actually just talking about the extracurricular activity buses. They shouldn't be doing any extracurricular on the buses anyway, so we're, I'm good with that. They need to be seated and, and obeying the rules. But this, this just basically says that it's a change in saying that we're going to use, we can use district activity and regular buses. we can use district activity and regular buses for extracurricular activity, so that we can make sure we get all of our kids to our sporting events, activities, et cetera. Okay? And lastly, is a new policy, student transportation in private vehicles. This policy is, just basically says that we do not encourage the use of private vehicles, but only the superintendent may authorize this if it's for children to and from school-sponsored activities, but has to be authorized by a superintendent. We have ran this by our insurance providers, and they are okay, Dr. Miley and his staff, with the policy as it's written here. Any questions?
Mr. Anderson, you do have a question here. You, too. Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you. I was wondering if we could include only the superintendent and/or his designee in this, in the event that the superintendent should not be available, that somebody else could make the decision?
I'm sure we can, yes, ma'am, if that's the will of the Board, yes, ma'am, sure.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, I guess my question would be mainly to Dr. Davis. Under what circumstance would you allow someone to use their private vehicle?
An emergency.
Good answer.
I was going to say.
An emergency, an emergency only. If we're trying to transport kids and it's an emergency, and we need the authorization to use personal vehicles, but just for general, everyday travel, I would not approve that. And I think the safeguard for that is not allowing anyone to make the decisions, i.e. a coach to put someone in their personal vehicle to transport them to or from a game, or a teacher transporting a student to or from anywhere in a personal vehicle. So it would only be in an emergency situation, a student was injured. And the only mode of transportation that we have right now accessible to us is to put them in a vehicle and get them to a hospital. So I would hope that that authorization will probably come after they've decided to do that. I hope they don't try to track me down, but yeah, we probably need to put in an administrative rule to that as well.
We agree with Dr. Davis' rule, but it wasn't a policy, so we felt it needed to be a policy.
Turn your light on, Will. Thank you.
I'm the one who always says to turn the light on, sorry. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Just one other question. Does this policy also refer to maybe teachers giving a kid a ride home after working with, after-school tutoring or something like that? Does this apply to that as well?
Yes, ma'am, the way is written "to and from school-sponsored activities." So if it's a school-sponsored activity, if there's a teacher that's staying after for tutoring, the way it's written, I believe that would qualify, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then the other question is, a lot of times, teachers may not be aware of the new policies that we have in place, so is this something that the principals will go back and incorporate in the student and parent handbook?
Yes, ma'am, it'll be communicated with our principals and then in the student handbook and parent handbook, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Bannick?
So I have a question. Dr. Elkins Johnson made me think, after-school activities, having been kind of involved in the coaching world a little bit before, sometimes you just get those students, you can't get ahold of the parent for whatever reason. The student is there, I mean, it's getting late at night, or, you know, well into the day, even sometimes after going on field trips. And I mean, I've had situations where the student's like, "Look, I got a key," whatever, I mean, but you're sitting there literally hours, and you can't get ahold of anybody. What do we do with that? When they're the last kid there, the last student there? I mean, if you've coached or done after-school, you've been in that situation at some point.
I, you know, I believe that falls to the urgency. Dr. Davis can probably answer that better than I can.
It depends on the time. We would encourage him to use the Comet system. We do provide, the Comet system will transport our students to and from various locations for free. And so all students in Richland 2 have access to Comet for free. It does help reduce the possibility and probability of litigation should something happen. And so it would be advantageous for us to do all we can to get a parent or guardian or someone that's located on the student's contact information contacted to come and pick the student up. And I, as an administrator, have set at schools to 11:00, 11:30 waiting on parents. It's a part of the responsibility and the role of school administration to do that, unfortunately. And if that does not work, then we would have to take necessary steps to alert the proper authorities that this is something that's an issue at our schools. But my recommendation is unless it's an emergency situation, emergency is a life or death situation, and illness, or something of that nature, that we avoid putting students in our personal vehicles and transporting them to and from events. It reduces a lot of issues that, impossibility of things that can come up. And unfortunately, in 2019, things are a little bit different as it relates to transporting students to and from school.
So I'm fine, and I wasn't leading in any direction. I was just asking what we do with that particular situation. I want to make sure that we, I know this has been asked for before, but I want to make sure that any, you know, teacher or staff member, whoever that deals with students in some of those after-school or field trip situations, that we just make sure that we do a really good job of educating them on this change in policy, to make sure everybody is aware of what the policy is and how to handle that situation.
And I think a good response to that question, too, Mr. Manin, would be, we will not leave the student at school unsupervised.
Right.
So if we are coming back from field trips or ballgames, someone, an adult with supervision should be there with the student until the last student is picked up.
And I agree, I just want to make sure they also know they can't bring them home. That's if they...
We will definitely communicate that.
Yeah, I just want to protect those staff members if there's a change in policy.
And there's been situations where they've gone through the list, and they have had to call the Sheriff's Department, because they have not been able to get ahold of anyone. So, you know, that happens rarely, but I know that people already are practicing that. So hopefully, we will continue to implement this policy in those practices.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Shad.
Mr. Anderson or Dr. Davis, I just want to be sure, this only applies for activities that are outside of the school?
As it states, it says "to and from school-sponsored activities." The Board does not encourage the use of private vehicles unless it's essential. There's probably, I don't know off the top of my head, there's probably a policy regarding our staff that regards students being in those types of vehicles. I don't know off the top of my head, you know, we have to look into that to find out, Mr. Shad.
Okay, and does this, this only applies to our staff, people that we pay? Or does this apply to volunteers, chaperones who may have gone on a field trip that also may want to take a student home?
It applies to everyone, the private vehicles for to and from, the way it's written, "to and from school-sponsored activities." So regardless if it's a to and from, I think it has to be in those, the approved transportation, unless an emergency, as Dr. Davis stated. That's the way, that's the way it reads to me. We can get more clarification, though, Mr. Shad.
Okay, but does that apply to volunteers?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They have to go through the proper background screening, et cetera, so that, yes, ma'am?
If a parent tells their neighbor who is a Richland 2 employee or a volunteer, "I give you permission to transport my child home," my neighbor, this will, if this goes through, this will prevent that person from doing that. If the parent says, "My child can go."
Well, if it's, I mean, if the, all of us have, the parents have to fill out the version contacts, and the people who can properly pick them up, if they go through the proper process, and picking them up from a sponsored event, or taking them, and the proper notification is given, I don't see why, this is, this is really talking about, you know, it's a club event, and there's four of us going down to the robotics competition on the beach, and we're all going to ride in my car. That's not going to happen, that's going to be an event, but I understand what you're saying, but...
Right, and that's why I asked, is this just for those activities, or is this also at school? For example, you go to a robotics conference or what have you, you get back on the bus, but then the child needs to get home. And for whatever reason, that parent gives that teacher permission to bring them home, that's why I wanted to know if it applied to school property, or is this only field trips and sporting events, that sort of thing? If you know at this time. Okay. Well, I think we can, we can bring back those answers of how we, how this is a new policy, and so we can discuss what, what those things would be. My initial thought to answer Mr. Shad's question would be, yes, it does apply to volunteers. Yes, it applies. Yes, if a parent asks a employee to bring their student home, the employee should tell the parent, "We're not authorized to provide transportation for your students to and from school." And I know that is harsh, but we have experienced times where incidents have happened, and then the district is in litigation, because the district did not get confirmation from the parent that they indeed gave that person an opportunity, that person permission to bring their son or daughter home. If that person does not come directly home with that student, then the district has now released that student into the custody of someone else. These types of things are somewhat easier to address the older the student is, but most of the rise in issues like this are related to a lot of younger students, and so they really can't advocate for themselves in those situations. So the district is trying to remove the teachers and administration from that responsibility of transporting students from school or from school-sponsored events to their homes. And put that responsibility on the parent and their, and the community to assist us in getting that student to and from the location. And so if we need to come up with other methods to do that, then I think we can, we can look at those situations on a case-by-case basis, where students having difficulty getting from a club, or a club meeting, or something like that, so that we can make sure they're getting home safely.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. The only thing I would just add is, just like we give permission slips for the students to participate in the activities, I think it may be helpful for the parents to know that if, that they can give permission to that, and hope, as written, I hope that the superintendent will approve those. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Bannick?
That actually makes me think of one more question. So I'm like one of those, you know, parent transporters that like picks up children and takes them to school, so, and sometimes picks them up from school that aren't children that are in my, my household. So does that, I mean, as Board members, sometimes we're volunteers, sometimes we're employee, we get looked at differently depending on the issue. So does that apply to us? So am I, and after this policy passes, would I no longer be able to take those students to school that I pick up in the morning?
From my understanding of the way the policy is currently written, this policy applies to district personnel, to employees. When you ask a question about whether you're a volunteer, I would respond to that saying that you are a Board member first in your capacity, and you can't move, remove your Board member responsibility of title. So even if you're volunteering, you're still a Board member, and then that doesn't cover you. Volunteers are not Board members, so they are under the auspice of the district rules and regulations.
So you're saying I can still pick those students up and take them to school? I'm just asking, I mean, I don't want to be like the first one violating the policy the day after it gets passed.
As I stated before, this is a new policy, so we can, we can take all the considerations from the Board as it relates to this policy, redraft and recraft this policy, and bring it back for, for the discussion.
Okay, Rissy wants to make sure she gets to school in the morning. Thank you.
We'll be happy to make, to do some more research and get some of these questions answered for you all, so thank you. Any other questions I can answer?
Any other questions about policy EAG?
I just want to say thanks to Dr. Franklin and Ms. Sherman for all they work, they do with these policies. They do a lot of work. I get up here and talk about them, but they do a lot of work, so thank them very much.
Permission slip?
Policy BEDB board agenda, at the request of the Board, we're revisiting the policy. And the only recommendation from administration is, in the public participation section of the policy, is clarifying official meeting by replacing that with the verbiage regularly-scheduled board meeting.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, Dr. Franklin?
The only recommendation from administration is in the public participation section of the policy.
Oh, I got it, I got it.
Where we clarify what official is, by striking the word official and replacing it with regularly-scheduled board meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments of Dr. Franklin with regard to this policy? Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you. The first question that I have, there seems to be a little bit of confusion. I've heard different interpretations from different Board members. But the second paragraph, "To be considered for placement on the agenda, an item must be within the scope of the duties," where is it? Okay, "must be received a minimum of three days prior to the desired meeting for it to be reviewed for the agenda." My understanding is prior to the board meeting. I've heard other interpretations prior to the agenda meeting. Which meeting are we referring to?
My interpretation of that, Ms. Agostini, is in prior to the agenda, I'm sorry, prior to the board meeting that you wanted to be placed on. The agenda item that you wanted to be placed, the agenda item for the upcoming board meeting, three days prior to the upcoming board meeting.
Thank you.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, I have two questions. One is, who receives the written request? And will they also acknowledge that they received it? Because it did not make note here.
You're referring to when a Board member submits a suggested agenda item?
Yes, yes.
Who receives it? Ms. Sherman does.
So it would be to Ms. Sherman?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And one other suggestion, if we could add that Board members will receive the agenda meeting date and time, I can't, can't read my writing, can't see. Board members will receive the agenda meeting date and time in advance, and if the Board Chair can't attend the meeting, the meeting will carry on with the Vice Chair. Because normally, if we have regular board meetings, or any other type of meetings, if the Board Chair cannot be available, the Vice Chair will carry on. So if we could submit something like that, if it's the pleasure of the Board. Therefore, we don't have too many council meetings, agenda meetings throughout the school year.
Dr. Carson Parker?
In my 38 years in Richland School District, two Board, Board Chairman folks, or Chairman, they do things different ways. Some like the other, other Board members to come and attend the meetings, some don't. It is not a requirement at all. So I think we should leave it the way it is. And I think it should be between the Superintendent and the Board Chair. What's the point of the Board Chair making these decisions if we have to include everyone else? This could be done by phone, it doesn't have to be done in person at a meeting. So I just, it's my personal opinion, we leave it the way it is.
And I have one more.
Okay, Dr. Elkins Johnson, and then Dr. Holmes.
Yes. The other suggestion that I wanted to make is that other Board members are encouraged to attend agenda meetings as long as there is not a quorum at the meetings. And I know since I've been on the Board, we've always been encouraged to attend agenda meetings, and most of us have attended, attended agenda meetings, so I would like to see that placed in the agenda.
Dr. Holmes?
The only issue that I have on here, it says the Superintendent and the Board Chair will decide whether or not to include requested items. I think since that we are all elected as Board members, and we have different constituencies that have different concerns, I have, I have sort of an issue with that the only items that can be put on the agenda basically come from the Superintendent and the Board Chair. Not saying that they're not going to be valid items, but there may be some items that some people have talked to me about that they would like to see on the agenda. I think, I was wondering, and this is just a suggestion, as to whether or not that there could be, I know, we don't want to overload an agenda with everybody's own personal issues, I understand that, but I think if we have an item that I'm bringing to the Board from my constituencies, and if we vote on it, if we get a majority that say, "Well, yes, that's a great item that needs to be, that needs to be added on to the agenda," I think we should be afforded the opportunity to add that agenda. And I checked other states and other precedents, and that is, they do that in other states, and they add that on by a majority vote of five if an additional item needs to be added... and they add that on by a majority vote of five if an additional item needs to be added on. I think because, like I said, the biggest issue for me is, is that we all have different constituents and people have come to and talked to us about different things, and we should be afforded to add things on to the agenda that other people that talk to, myself specifically, James, whoever, at least be, bring it to the table or have the object to bring it to the table to be discussed and put on the agenda.
Good. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Dr. Davis?
At the last board meeting, we had a discussion regarding this policy, and I shared with the board that the way the policy is currently written, I shared with the board that this policy was passed in August of 2017, that whether the policy is currently written, we have not been following the policy as the policy is stated. And I made the recommendation that the board consider, before changing the policy, to follow the policy first to see if this policy would, if by following the policy, it would work amicably for all board members to make sure that their issues are addressed. One of the glaring omissions in the following of the policy is the board is supposed to approve the agenda beforehand. And so, as a, as a result of that, and I stated that we would begin following the policy as written, on this current agenda, you see that there is a approval for the February 26 board meeting. So, if there is something that is not on that board agenda that you would like to see on, that you can make a motion to add item X, Y, and Z to the board, to the, to the February 26 board meeting, and then the board would get an opportunity to vote on whether or not to add that item. So, it creates a checks and balance on items being suggested to the board chair and to the superintendent, and reduces the need to have a number of people at an agenda set. I mean, that way, your items will always be present, and if they're not present, you have the ability to publicly request that that item be placed on the agenda, future agendas, and then vote and get the support of your fellow board members to have that done. If we do that, if we follow the policy, I think it will alleviate any of those concerns. That's my recommendation to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. That addresses my major concern. I'm glad to see that you added that on there, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
While I appreciate what Dr. Davis just said, now I have a concern. If that is the case, would not that Dr. Davis be in conflict with the second, well, I guess the second and third sentence in paragraph two where this suggestion by a board member would have to be in writing electronically or paper, a minimum of three business days prior to the desired meeting? And you just answered, Mrs. Agostini, that that would be the next meeting. So, we would not be in compliance if it's done through a motion, correct?
It would be, this is a suggested items that you want to put in writing, so this is not voteable. The items that go on the agenda are not voteable, but the board has to approve the agenda. So, it is just kind of a backup. If, once you suggested something, say, once or twice, and you don't see it, now you have the opportunity to bring that before the public and share that you would like that item added to the upcoming agenda before you approve the, the future agenda items. It may mean that we may have to look at the number of days, but an opportunity to organ, for the help of administration organize the agenda, we need some sort of formal way of seeing what types of requests are there. So, I think it's still important to have a method of suggesting items on the agenda versus just simply at the end of the board meeting suggesting that I would like to see, see certain things. It gives us an idea of the consensus of the board of what items you would like to see on, on an upcoming agenda. So, if three board members are suggesting that we talk about ants in the parking lot, and that's just, I just picked something, it's getting late, then we know that we have, we have a number of, a minute, we have board members that's interested in that item. So, I don't, I don't think it creates a conflict, Mr. Shad, if we still get the items in writing electronically. We may need to change the three business days to three days after the last board meeting or something to that suggestion, but that's, that's just a suggestion. Or week prior to the board meeting or something like that.
Yes. Mr. Shad, can I speak to your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Just because I know that we have been doing, I've been on the board, this is my fifth year now, and I know that there are a lot of things that we follow that are not policy, they are practice. And some of the practices that we adhere to tend to cause a little bit of gray area and some friction. So, my recommendation to the superintendent is that we stick to board policy. I mean, this, this policy was voted in August 17. We were all on the board except for Dr. Holmes. Dr. Holmes wasn't here, and she's indicated her feedback on it. We've gone through four superintendents since August, August of 2017, and we have pretty much been, you know, I think extending courtesies and administrative. But I recommended him with, that with all of our policies, we follow the policy. If it's not working, then we edit it. But we have not, we have not followed this policy. I know there have been a lot of questions with regard to the board agenda, but we have not followed the policy since I've been on the board. I don't know about before I got on the board, but since I've been on the board, we have not followed the policy. As I read it, this gives everyone an opportunity, because I've, I've been there when I've had to, you know, ask for several, certain things to be on the agenda or to have a report or something. This is before you, Dr. Davis. I mean, when I first got on the board and I had to ask for things, you know, it, it happens to all of us. But with regard to the board agenda, my recommendation was that we follow the policy because we never have. And if the policy is not working, and if policy is broken, and we need to do something else and tweak it, but we've just voted on it, all of us, in August of 2017, but we have not followed the policy. And the way the policy is written, it allows everyone to insert or add or request something on the agenda in writing or electronically. Therefore, we have a sense of who wants to see it on the agenda. And if it doesn't make the agenda, I don't know. Can we have a workshop or something so that everyone's needs are met? Because all of us, we're all here, we have one vote, we're all, you know, we've all talked about how we're all working collectively, but we're individual board members, so individual board members' interests may be different. My recommendation is that we follow the policy because we never have.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning. Mr. Manning?
Yeah, so I have a couple logistical questions. So, one, we, so we have 15.1 approval of the February meeting. Is that a voting item or just a?
Been hearing.
That 15.1, is that a voting item? So, so let's say we vote on it, and let's say that something comes up the day before the meeting, 24 hours, so we can get 24-hour notice. So, let's say 36, so our board chair can get 24-hour notice. And the board chair has to remove something to add something because of an emergency. So, I just want to make sure that the rest of the board is okay with the board chair still being able to do that because, I mean, the policy allows for it. We voted on something, but the board chair still has latitude depending on certain issues that arise. I want to make sure they still have that latitude.
Yes, so the board chair in, in emergency situations, however, the board has to vote, and you vote every meeting to prove the consent agenda.
Right, yeah.
And to approve the current agenda.
Right, yeah.
So, nothing can be changed if, if something is changed and you don't have to approve that agenda.
So, let me ask, so if we get in here, and let's say I get unhappy with an agenda, and we get, or not me, four people get unhappy with the agenda and vote the agenda down, does that shut the whole meeting down? We don't have a meeting?
Uh.
I'm just asking. I mean.
That possibility exists now.
It does.
So, I don't, I think hypothetically, it, it could happen now in any board meeting that you can have four people decide to shed an agenda down. Would hope that we would go about the business of the board and not, not do something like that.
I'm fine with doing it this way. I just want to make sure that the, that the board thinks through all the little issues because there's a lot of things. I want, having been the board chair before, there are things, sometimes you just have to make a decision, and you try to get a hold of board members and ask, but if you can't, because the other issue we have is almost impossible for us to communicate. So, you said, send it in writing, try to have the board members, if we get at least maybe three people or we get consensus from the board, well, I mean, I, we, we can't respond to all, and if I send something, I'm supposed to not send it. I mean, we can't really talk because of the open records laws and all that stuff, so it makes it really difficult.
You're sending it not to the entire board, you're sending it to Tamika, to the board secretary.
But then how do I know what Dr. Elkins Johnson sent in that I may agree or not agree with? I mean, I'm not being difficult, I'm just trying to figure out how it works.
Well, I would advise not to, to do that because that would constitute a secret meeting. If you, if you're talking to other board members about items to put on the agenda, then you're.
That's not, I can't talk to Dr. Elkins Johnson.
If you're talking about items, if you're, if you're talking to collude to put items on a, on an agenda, would that not constitute a meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, in my opinion, I got, how else? Holy cow. Y'all want to have four-hour meetings? We can come in here and talk about all, but, I mean, I, I'm not being difficult, it just seems like that it's, there's a point where it almost gets ridiculous. And I mean, I'm, I think, even though we do have policy to send it in, the board chair has latitude. I think that, we've all had some things we wanted to see, maybe it didn't get on that meeting or the next meeting, or you, or you asked, can we just give it to you in a report, not on a, and we just kind of work with that. I think it, it can get very difficult if I some, if we just somehow had to have three of us randomly send something in to show consensus to get it on an agenda.
I, I don't think that you have to have three people send it in, and, and let me just say, we've discussed this at length about the board agenda. And no one's said they'd like the process that the way it would currently like the process. There's been shared concern about the way the current practices are being done, but no one has said that they want us to continue to do it the way prior to the, prior to Ms. Mackey being the board chair. So, I'm not really sure, as administration, we're not really sure what the board would like to do as it relates to setting the agenda. My recommendation is that we follow the policy. If the recommendation, if that's not the policy that the board wants, my recommendation is that the board make suggestions to change the policy. The policy as presented is consistent with school board, excuse, I'm sorry, school boards across the state. We've checked with Lexington, Richland 5, Lexington 1, Berkeley, Ori County, all the school districts that are about our size or smaller, and this is pretty much the board policy from, from the School Board Association. We have not been following the policy, we have not been getting the information in writing, and so, to address the concerns of board members who felt, feel that their issues are not being brought or placed on the agenda, the recommendation is to follow the policy as written. If that policy doesn't fit, fit what the board wants, then, then we would need some sort of suggestions. And that's what this is, an opportunity to suggest the changes, but the administration is recommending this policy as is.
I'm fine with the policy that I could send something in as an individual board member, and my chair, whoever, chairperson, whoever that chair is, make a decision whether they think that's something based off other conversation they feel constitutes an issue that the board needs to hear or not. So, that, that, put it in writing, that part, I know we have to do now, I'm fine with that, but I've been fine with our board chairs and the processes that they've used to get things on the agenda. So, I'm, I'm publicly stating that now.
Let me make a point of just clarification with regard to policy B E D B, the board agenda. It was issued in 2017. We've gone through four, you know, four superintendents, so it's not an Amelia issue. This is a board superintendent thing, but I wanted to say the first senate, the second sentence of the first paragraph says the superintendent, "In cooperation with the board chairman, prepare the agenda." This is the superintendent who is spearheading this. This is his, you, you read through this and you see the superintendent's name, you know, riddled throughout the policy. I think the board chairman is, the board chair is, you know, whomever that is, is listed twice. So, this is the board, this is the superintendent's agenda setting meeting that he holds in cooperation with the board chair. It's not the board chair, I think, I keep hearing the board chair, it's not the board chair's meeting, it's the superintendent's. Mrs. Agostini?
So, just to be clear on this, the agenda meeting now will just take place with the superintendent and the board chair, and others from the board will no longer be invited to attend the agenda meetings.
We're just trying to, we're just trying to give a chance to follow the board policy. My recommendation is to follow the board policy.
Thank you.
As it's, as it's written.
So, no agenda meeting tomorrow morning?
The, the, the agenda meeting should, should still take place at 11:00, but we're following the policy as it's written.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry. Additional questions for Dr. Franklin?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
Not for Dr. Franklin, but for Dr. Elkins Johnson. You made a suggestion in terms of having something in advance. What did you mean by in advance, or could you specify, are you talking about days or hours or weeks?
Um, we said that's.
You, you, well, you mentioned something about getting notice in advance. I, I remember you used that phrase, in advance.
I might be able to address that. I think it was notification of the agenda meetings. Is that, does that?
That could be.
Prompt you?
Let me just go back, Mr. Shad. When I mentioned about board members will receive the agenda meeting date and time in advance, and if the board chair can't attend the meeting, is that what you're referencing?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. But this will no longer be in place if we follow the new policy.
Not a new policy.
Well, not, well, it's a policy.
If we adhere to the current policy.
Adhere to that we've never followed because everyone has always said it was a policy, and now we know it was a practice and not a policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other questions or concerns regarding policy B E D B, the board agenda? If not, thank you, Dr. Franklin. And let me just say something to people. I know that, just, just so people have an understanding, especially, you know, there are younger folks in the room, and the policies that we have, a lot of them are, most of them are recommended from the South Carolina School Board Association, and we adopt those because we have to have something to govern you. Sometimes we tweak them if it needs to be, you know, unique to district two. But the policies that Dr. Franklin and, and Dr. Davis and their team go through, this is a laborious, this is a laborious process. So, I just wanted to tip my hat to them, Mr. Price, with regard to, you know, the calendar and, and, you know, mixed weather days and having to stay on top of legislation, to stay on top of the laws that abide that. I just wanted to let people know that a lot of work goes into the presentations that we see here in the evenings, and I appreciate you. Moving on to, I'm sorry, let me scroll down, to item 13.8, Board Budget Priorities. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Ms. Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Harry Miley is before you this evening to share information in relation to our board budget priorities. Dr. Miley?
Thank you. Madam Chair, board members, this has been on the agenda. It was, I was planning to discuss all the priorities from all the board members, and we're not quite there yet. So, what I thought I would do would be to ask you again to make sure I've got all your budget priorities. And what I was planning to do was take them and try to come back to you with a shorter list and see if we could come to some kind of consensus on what the priorities are. There, a lot of people have priorities that maybe they only have, and that maybe you listed by one board member, but then there are multiple policies, multiple priorities that are very similar. Maintain class size, security issues and things like that, professional development for teachers. So, what I thought I'd do is, once I get all the priorities, would compile that list and send it back to you and see if that, if that will work. It may not. It may, that, that list of, of top 10 might be top 40, but I thought that might help us in terms of, of coming to some consensus on what the board feels like are their top budget priorities.
Dr. Miley, is there a process that you would recommend us in, in handling of those pri, those priorities? Because I pretty much just tweak my list from every year, and where I see that, you know, a concern I have is no longer a, you know, resounding concern, I just put maintain whatever so you don't think that concern has gone away. I'm still concerned I have maintained. But if a concern is no longer resounding, and you can see that we pretty much handle that, should I just delete that? I put maintain because I'm afraid to delete anything, but should I delete that? What do you recommend?
Well, and I've, I've noticed that by several, because you certainly don't want to not say security of schools is a priority. I understand that. So, I think, want to try to tweak it a little bit to say, okay, if we could list this top 10 and say, okay, out of these top 10 that are most frequently listed, what are your top five or something like that? Because we do want to hone in, because we can't do everything, but a lot of the concern, a lot of the priorities that were listed, we are taking care of in some of the bond referendum issues. And so, we are, we understand that they're priorities and we're addressing them, but in terms of the general fund budget priority, they may not necessarily be, needed to be listed.
So, the same process that you employed last year?
Yeah. And the process that y'all do, I appreciate everybody's concerns and thoughts, and, and I don't want to limit anybody, and I don't think we want to limit anybody's thought process in terms of what your personal priorities are.
Mr. Manning?
And, oh, Dr. Miley, I have not sent mine in, so I'll give you my one. Mental health issues for our students, we need to address that. That's a priority for me in our budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Other additional questions or concerns for Dr. Miley? Other additional questions or concerns for Dr. Malle? Did I let you finish? Did I interrupt you? Did you finish?
I'm finished, yes, ma'am.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Malle? Thank you, Dr. Malle. Moving on to item thirteen point nine, a report on minority business participation, Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we have Mr. Dolores Coleman before you this evening to give you a report on small and minority business participation in Richland School District two.
And Dr. Malle. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I thought I'd start this off, appreciate it. Dolores and our team has put together the information for your consideration. And we wanted to kind of review four different topics. Oh, this, I have, thank you. We have four different topics. We want to talk about the improvements to improve small minority participation, the efforts we've made to make it easier to do business with the district, and the bond referendum aspects of minority and small business participation, and some of our history of our participation results. The efforts we've made so far, thanks to Dolores and the support from, from Dr. Davis, we've, we've had two small minority vendor showcases, both in one in seventeen and one in eighteen. From those two events, we added fifteen vendors to our vendor list. But we still want to improve on it. We, in the last two years, we focused in one of the purposes, as you know, where site-based management and a lot of decisions, a lot of purchasing decisions are made at the schools. And what we wanted to try to do was get the vendors to connect to the school purchasing people. And we, we think we improved that, but one of the problems was we didn't have enough of the school people who actually make those decisions come and visit the showcase. So we want to improve on that. We're going to change the time of the day so that it's not during the middle of the day and lunch, so that some of those school people can get away. We thought that that, this might help. We'll see, it's a, it's a learning experience and it's, it's evolving process. But we've grown in participation and we, and we think this will help. And we're also going to open it up to the community so that, that, and if it's an effort, we want to do more business with local and minority vendors, but we also want them to do more business, period. And so if we can open it up to the community and, and host this site, so that's one of the things. We're going to advertise more, and we're going to open it up to the community and invite the community in. Yes, we want our school sites to participate more and be more active, but we also think it might be beneficial for the community to also see some of these vendors to, to help their business efforts as well. So that's what we hope to do with the showcase in nineteen, it'll be March the twenty seventh. Again, we'll get a notice out about the time, as soon as Dolores tells me when that is. And she may have, but I may have forgotten. But it's something in the afternoon that'll help participation, attendance. We think we've done a better job at improving, in terms of our evaluating our, when we solicit business, some of the time we have not always had in the criteria to select, to make the selection. When we interview, for instance, or evaluate proposals, we haven't always had the participation of small minority businesses as a criteria in those evaluations. And we're putting more and more of that when it's appropriate, when the, when the solicitation is large enough and RFPs and things like that. And our selection committees perhaps may not have been as diverse as they should have been in the past. And we're ensuring that those selection committees are more diverse to help that evaluation process. How do we make it be easier to make, to do business with the, with, with the district? We've updated our procurement website. If you haven't been there, you need to go visit it. I think our communications department and our IT department and Dolores have done a great job in making our procurement website much friend, much more friendly, user-friendly. And we, we, all of our solicitations are advertised, we host all the awards on the website, and we've streamlined the vendor registration process to make it more user-friendly. The bond referendum, I think we have discussed this in, in discussions with you, not necessarily to the public, but in discussions with, with you. The architectural services, we had eighteen, we, we had eighteen received. If you remember right, we actually had about thirty-five people ask us to send them the proposal. So we had a great deal of acknowledgement about the architectural services, RFP. Had about thirty-five people ask for it, eighteen of them responded. We interviewed eleven and ten were awarded, as if you remember right, and I have a typo in there and it's my problem. Basically, if there's anything good with this program, it's Dolores's efforts. If anything's bad, it's my fault. And I have a typo in there, it's supposed to be six of them, instead of T T E M. But six of the firms, the first time, were working with the district. We, we heard from the board that we wanted to see some variety and not the same old firms working with us. And six, the, six of those ten were new firms that had never done business with the district. Two of them were minority-owned firms. The construction management at risk, RFP, the firms that you just awarded contract, approved the contracts tonight. We had twelve submitted, we interviewed eight, and we awarded six of those tonight. You approved six contracts to be awarded. Four of those firms were working with minority and female-owned construction companies. So the bond referendums will submit, they'll submit us quarterly reports. And if you remember right, if you remember when discussing the at-risk delivery model, the at-risk delivery model lets us review the actual procurement process of the subcontractors. And one of the things that is, is important there is, and this is important with all small and, and small companies, there may be a contract for a very large electrical project. And there's only a few firms in the state that might be able to handle that large of a contract. And what we can do is insist on those contracts being split up into much smaller components that opens up the opportunities for much more, many more firms to participate. And we can be involved in that, so we think that that'll help in that process. We have our district's landscape and grounds in terms of our history. We have our grounds and maintenance contractors with a minority firm. We have four minority painters. And as y'all know, we paint a lot, probably about, I don't know, Will is probably somewhere in the room, but probably at least a half a million, maybe a million dollars worth of painting a year. We paint a lot. We have twelve minority motor coach firms who go through the process of being sort of, to be approved in terms of insurance coverage and, and all licenses, office supply company, and we have several minority caterers in the district. We have a plan that has, has been on the books for some time. It states that ten percent of our operating expended dollars, that's our non-construction budget, will be directed towards minority businesses. And five percent of capital projects, the construction projects, will be directed toward minority businesses. Those two were established BH before Harry, and those have been on the books for a while. And as you can see, we have not had the best record, pretty close a few years in terms of our operating goal. We have come close to four point six percent, close to the five, well, we're coming, the ten percent goal, we have not come close to even five percent. And that goal may need to be revisited, but we also think that some of our efforts that we just outlined may help with us in terms of improving that participation. We've, we've met the five percent goal in construction many years. That's just like we outlined how the construction, construction firms are held to participation levels. That's why we have been able to successfully meet those goals. We, we will revisit, we will be glad to reconsider these goals. Perhaps it's time to revisit them. But we also think that, given the track record of what Dolores has been able to do and the things we've put in place, that we think we're in the right, moving in the right direction to make those numbers look better. And with that, be glad to answer any questions.
I have a question, a couple. With regard to, I know equity and parity is extremely important to me. Diversity plays a direct role in that. I know Dr. Grant does a good job of trying to infuse diversity into everything that we do. Our children come ready-made diverse. Our children are different, they come from different socioeconomic classes, they look different, they have different worldviews and perspectives. Their diversity comes ready-made. We have to work harder when we are meeting those diversity needs, they don't come ready-made. So I wanted to thank you all. I won't speak to the goals, maybe another board member will. You've mentioned several times that you're trying to reconsider those, and I know it's a process, so I'm going to let that go. I know that those numbers will change, so I will defer to what you have said. With regard to, I'm thankful for your transparency. A whole lot has gone into this. I remember before I got on the board, I used to sit here in, in the board meetings, and there was a board member who would harp on minority participation, BH, before Harry. He would harp on minority participation and making sure that he understood what those numbers looked like and asking for reports before I got on the board. And so the fact that you all are coming here and that you are being as transparent as you am, I know that you all have shared the process with us regarding contractors, so we know how transparent that has been. There's always room for improvement with anything, but I appreciate your transparency. I know that we have a question, well, I'll, I'll email that one, don't worry about it. I like to see the quarterly reports because there could be a contractor who says they're going to partner with a minority vendor, and then we find out later that they've gotten the contract, but they didn't honor the agreement they have with that minority vendor. You can enforce that, but you can see their quarterly reports to see if they're, so I, I do like to see that. And regard to contractors, I know that I came to your minority fair last year, and I appreciated it. With regard to contractors, is there something that we could have for contractors too? Or should they already understand the process because, I know their, their stuff is posted on SKEBO? Is there anything that we can do for, I don't know, to make sure they understand? Or should they already understand? And I'm fine with whatever your answer is, thank you.
They will already have, they already have plans for having those types of events for their projects. The contractors that you just approved tonight, they'll have plans to come to the community and basically have their own vendor affairs, vendor, not affairs, vendor fairs in terms of.
For their, for their companies?
For their company, for their project, yes. So they'll, I mean, they'll be soliciting that onsite, you know, here in the community for their company to be, for company, for firms to be subcontractors to them, yes.
And our way of knowing if they're being compliant with getting minority is the quarterly reports?
Right.
Excellent.
And we will be at those events when, when they hold their own events.
Oh, I love it.
We'll be here when we have our events, but when they hold their events, we'll be there.
Excellent, thank you. Any other board members? Dr. Holmes?
Yes, I'd just like to echo on what Chairman Mackey said. I really appreciate the hard work that you all put into that. You all knew that that was a big concern, concern for the board. And I've seen the effort that both of you and your team have put into that. And I would like to say thank you very much, and it is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes.
Dolores says thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Any other questions or comments from board members, Mr. Shad?
Thank you. When did you arrive, Dr. Malle?
I started in September nineteen twenty-two. September thirteen, twenty thirteen.
Okay, so the chart that we have up.
I'm a big part of that, I'm not, I, yes.
Do you know, or do you, do you have any references to how long these goals were put in place? I know this is before you.
Two thousand one.
So seventeen, yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, the goals were put in place, I believe, in two thousand one, and that was BD, before Dolores. And our procurement code was put into effect in two thousand six. So these goals were actually in place before we adopted our procurement code.
And what is that procurement code called for in terms of small and minority business?
Well, the procurement code does not have anything in it regarding minority businesses. It's not supposed to, because our code at that time fairly mirrored the state procurement code. The state also asked that districts develop a minority business utilization plan, which is that plan. And I think before we adopted our procurement code, the plan was already in place. Keep in mind as well, we did not have to have a procurement code years ago because the district was small. As the district grew, our procurement code then had to mirror the state procurement code. And that was done back in two thousand six, again, before Dolores.
So we have not, as a district, revisited for the last seventeen years, the utilization plan?
It has not been updated.
And the numbers are showing for ten percent goal operating, we've not even gotten to half of the goal since two thousand one, well, at least eleven to twelve, I guess, ever. And for the five percent construction, we've sometimes far exceeded the five percent, so we show that we can do it. So I'm not sure what we need to do, but I would definitely like for the utilization plan to be updated. Given the current climate, this, we're not in two thousand one anymore. I'm sure there are minority particip, and I appreciate the efforts that you all are making with the showcase as well. I don't know if this is the proper venue to ask for that goal now. Dr. Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Shad. I think the goal is an administrative goal. And so administration, we've already been in discussions about revisiting the goal and adopting new goals as we move forward, particularly as we're entering this, this upcoming bond work that's being done because of the bond referendum. And so we, but we wanted to show you what the goals, to be transparent. We wanted to show you what the goals were and where we were in meeting those goals, going back to eleven, twelve, all the way to seventeen, eighteen. But we have already in discussions on determining what the new goals will be. We could provide an update for the board either via board brief or come back and give you an update when we do the next update, as far as participation is concerned, on what those goals, what those goals are.
Thank you. And specifically with the bond referendum, I just want to say publicly that the administration is very aware of the board's goals for them with regard to minority participation, which is far higher than what we've had since two thousand one on this slide. And so we would hope that we would strive as hard as we can to meet, no, not meet, let's exceed those goals. And if you could go back, Dr. Malle, to, well, the showcase. And I would applaud you all for all that you all did with the, in terms of the architecture and the, the general contractor. And of course, we being heavily involved in terms of the subcontractors. I think that's where the bulk of the minority participation is going to come, when you get to the subs and meeting that goal. Now, the showcase, it's once a year, it's a one-shot deal, whether the contractor can make it or not. But are we having any contact with them? Because I know we got a database now, because we, we did it in seventeen, so we have a database of even just the applicants. Well, not the applicants, but the persons who said that they wanted to participate. Are we keeping in contact with them throughout the year to, just to make sure that they know that we still have our arms open and it's not just a, a one-shot deal?
We have not physically reached out to most of them periodically. We will send an email, like a group email to those vendors. Just recently, I sent a group email to them, at least to let them know about the upcoming business showcase, in case they're not aware of it. And it is, and as Dr. Malle stated, we're looking at this year, you know, doing a little bit more advertising about the showcase in the hopes of getting more subcontractors. The last two showcases we had, we had a lot of businesses, but not as many subcontractors. So this year, we're trying to focus a little bit more on those subcontractors to get them in because we do know that we will have projects coming up in the upcoming years and will need their services.
And, and, you know, I attended the showcase, I think, both years, I know last year. And so that's, I believe that that's great, that we, we have fifteen new that are on board that never did any business with the district in the past, so I applaud y'all's efforts in that. Is that business with the district or some of those also with the school?
Those fifteen are business with the district.
Okay.
But above that fifteen, we often have some of those other small businesses that will participate in events that they have at the school. Some of our schools, especially right before the spring break time around Easter, will hold different events at their schools, and they have invited some of those vendors to come and set up a booth. Now, those are not added to our system because we're not actually procuring anything from them, but schools are using them.
And I might have asked you this last year, do we have a mechanism now where these instructional leaders are reporting back to you all as to the minority participation that they are utilizing? Because I, these numbers may change, actually.
What basically happens in procurement, no vendor is added to the system without procurement adding that vendor. And when we get that vendor application or that W. And when we get that vendor application or that W-9, we ask, are you a minority vendor? And we, when we enter them in the system, we enter them by a category code so that we know when we're adding a minority vendor.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
They can't get paid until they do that.
Right.
If they're, I mean, if they're doing business with us, they're not going to get paid until we have them registered.
Including that particular school?
Doesn't matter.
Right, okay. All right, very good.
The only way it would be is if PTO's cut them a check or something.
Right.
But if they're getting paid with district dollars, we will have that in the system.
And even though schools can decide who they're going to purchase from, like Dr. Maly said, they still have to contact us so that we can add that vendor. Until that vendor is added in the system, they can't even enter requisition for that vendor. So that's how we keep track of how the vendors are added.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Are there additional questions or comments from board members? If not, thank you, Dr. Harry. Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Next, we are almost there. Item 14.1, agenda items for February 26, 2019. Dr. Davis?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the February 26 future agenda items, we have student appeals, adult aid requests, legislative update, we'll have the approval of policy revisions, EEA transportation, EEAC bus scheduling and routing, EEAE bus safety program, EEAEC student conduct on buses, EFA extracurricular activity buses, well, EAG student transportation in private vehicles, EEA transportation, and BEDB board agenda. We'll have proposals for policy revisions to FA, which is facilities, goals, priority objectives, FB facilities planning, FEE site acquisition, FF naming facilities, and EFE competitive food sales slash vending machines. We'll have a second quarter financial report, we'll have a report for capital improvement updates, a report on high school gifted and talented, and we'll have a report on culturally relevant training.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Was this the time for, typically we have asked for recommendations for future board agendas, but I think that you gave us in our black folders tonight, a sheet of paper to submit to you with regard to future agenda items in our black folders that we were given tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Does everyone have that?
Yes.
So do you want us to give those to you?
Whenever you're ready to give them to.
Okay.
Whenever board members are ready to give them to me or Tamika.
Okay. And it doesn't have to be the form, just whatever we want to see written?
The form is just, the form is just something that's handy for right now, just in case you want to do it tonight before you leave.
Madam Chair, where are the black folders?
Maybe I'm not the only one with a black folder, but the form was in my folder. Did we all get a form? Was it just me?
I didn't get a folder. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. If not, we'll move on to item 15.1, approval of the February 26, 2019 agenda. We'll receive a motion at this time. Mr. Manning?
I'm sorry, but if we want to see something removed, do I also put that in writing, not just, I'm sorry.
Dr. Davis. And his preface was that he wasn't trying to be difficult. Okay.
I know I am sometimes.
You can make a motion to add an item removed from the future agenda. That motion then would need to be seconded and voted on to remove the item from the future agenda.
Okay, then I won't do that.
Do you have, is Mr. Shad?
I move that we approve the agenda for the February 26, 2019 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion with regard to the February 26 agenda?
I have a question.
Mrs. Agostini?
I'm just, I'm looking at this, and there are things that are just standard practice that aren't included in this. So how does this actually work? Because this doesn't look to me like, for example, the inspirational moment and the pledge of allegiance, or just two that jump out that are not included in this. So how binding is this? Because it seems to me we're going to have to be doing another, approval of another agenda prior to the board meeting.
The items like inspirational moment are standing items on the agenda, so we didn't place those on there because they will, they will always be on there, well, i.e., we didn't have the executive session on there, because we always have an executive session item. So that's just, we just didn't, we didn't do the inspirational moments and those things. These are items of interest that the board, that we're asking the board to approve the future agenda item, uh, future agenda items for the upcoming board meeting. Again, we can make the recommendation that we don't take, use this process. This is a process that administration came up with to try to alleviate some of the concerns about placing items on the agenda. However, I'm not seeing, I don't know if that's something that the board wants at this time, and so-
I think that, I think that your explanation that those are standing items, that the standing items are not listed because they're on every agenda. Is there a consensus that every standing item be there? There are the standing items. You're always going to have inspirational moment. You're always going to have the pledge of allegiance, so it's not really something that we need to vote on, because it's always going to occur on an agenda meeting.
But we will make sure on the next approval of the agenda that it be, it's the actual agenda the way it looks.
Thank you, I would like to see.
So that they can prove it as is. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. Has it been, it's been seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any more discussion? If not, let us cast our votes at this time. Did it pop up for everyone, Mrs. Sherman? Okay. By a vote of six to no, the agenda, the motion carries, and the agenda has, for the February 26 meeting, has been approved. Next item is item 16.1. It's our second public participation, where typically we'd have our carryover if everyone couldn't get into the first session, but everyone who signed up actually before the meeting was actually heard in the first public participation section. So we can move on to item 17.1, board and superintendent comments. Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wish everyone a happy President's Day coming up next Monday, and I thank Colonel McLam, who's hopefully not asleep now. Thank you, sir, for your service, and of course, your very inspirational moment.
Yes.
Great choice, and you knocked it out of the park, sir. Absolutely. I also wanted to congratulate our national certified board teachers. I appreciate that we have 724 overall. We have seven new ones, and I thought I counted this right, 36 who were renewed. That's awesome. These are obviously the best of the best, because that's what we have here at Richland District 2. I don't mind saying it, and I'll sing the praises of our district for as long as I can. But this is just a, one example of that. As we know, our national board certified teachers also do more than just do well. We use them to mentor some of our, our, those teachers who are new to District 2, sort of guide them along, get them involved in the culture, and of course, the hope is that they enjoy the experience and agree to retain and stay here with us for as long as possible. So I think that's great that we've implemented that, and I'm sure that's still a part of it. And I believe that is it, other than to say, happy anniversary. I talked to her privately, but happy anniversary to Dr. Monica Elkins Johnson, and I believe I saw Mr. Johnson here as well, I think, maybe, but happy anniversary to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Mrs. Agostini?
Well, it's definitely past my bedtime. Thank you, Colonel McLam, for inspiring, inspiring us tonight, and congratulations to all the teachers receiving their national board certifications, and for those that got recertified. And also, big congratulations to all of our students who are recognized this evening. Over the past month, I've been undated with phone calls, emails, personal messages, stopped at the grocery store, stopped at the gym, and stopped anywhere in the community for people to share with me their concerns about our school board. Tonight, I'm going to share with you an email that I received on February 8, in which our whole school board shared, which pretty much summarizes the conversations I've been hearing. Distinguished board members, Madam Chairwoman, and Dr. Davis, I am a parent of Richland 2 School District students and an ardent public school supporter. I also own multiple businesses in Columbia. We chose this school district 12 years ago, and we're very proud to be a part of a school district that rivaled the best in the state. Over the years, I've become close to many of the principals, teachers, school board members, and superintendents. I have defended our public schools vehemently over the years to our friends, who nearly all send their children to private schools. I have contributed to foundations and countless fundraisers. In short, I've been your biggest fan. Today, I find myself embarrassed, apologetic, and a new supporter of private school education for those of us living in Northeast Columbia. We have six young families on our street with children approaching elementary school age or already in elementary school. I am encouraging these families to look outside Richland School District 2, because it's become abundantly clear that our leadership is failing us. Many of us voted for the nearly $500 million bond referendum. It's absolutely unconscionable that we have someone who clearly cannot manage their own personal finances, be in control of such an enormous amount of money. I've listened to the many excuses as to why Madam Chairwoman could not find the time to make the appropriate filings. I have listened to the additional batch of excuses as to why the issues were not settled months before the fines escalated to more than $52,000. How can I reasonably expect that our chairwoman is capable of managing a half billion dollars when she cannot manage a simple ethics filing? And that was initially a very small fine. Madam Chairwoman, please do the honorable thing and resign your chair. Making a mistake is forgivable. Ignoring the mistake and the responsibility to rectify your error is a clear indication that you are not qualified to lead the board. Now, on a more positive note, what makes this job so worthwhile? And sitting here, I'm going to tell you or share with you a couple of things that happened to me last week, visiting our schools. I went to Pontiac Elementary and wanted to see their magnet program, and I sat with a young girl named Kennedy, and she showed me how to do math. She was teaching me how to regroup. And at the end of the regrouping lesson, Kennedy asked me if I would please sit next to her at lunch, and could we play at recess? Jake, a fifth grader at Condor, whom I met while he was participating in the dance workshop at Ridgeview High School, asked if I could please stop in and visit him and the rest of the boys at the Condor Boys Program and have lunch with him when I go to have lunch with my lunch buddy. Finally, my favorite story from last week was participating in Sam Lapper's Rock the Mock. One of the students I interviewed told me he thought I was 34 years old. This middle-aged woman may or may not have given him a couple of extra points. He certainly rocked the interview. Thank you.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Shad made the announcement, but I do want to say happy anniversary to my husband, Gardner Johnson, if you would stand. Wake up, wake up. I know it's past your bedtime also. Stand, please. Happy anniversary to you. And then, second of all, it's past our bedtime. Second of all, about a week ago, I placed a message on Facebook, and I know that everyone is not on social media, so I'm going to read the statement that I actually placed on Facebook for all of you. It says, "Richland 2 family, friends, and community. I want to sincerely apologize for the comments I made and the language that I used after the January 22, 2019 school board meeting. Maintaining a high professional standard is something I've always strived to demonstrate as a Christian educator, 30-year educator, and public servant. Therefore, I should not have allowed the misconduct of others to take me out of my character. However, when several people violated my space, it took me to an unfamiliar level, which I am not proud of as a servant leader, and as a result, I ask for your forgiveness. Thank you to everyone for the phone calls, the text messages, the emails, the Facebook messages, and the hugs. Please know that I am doing well, and this too shall pass." As Dr. Davis mentioned, he was raised by his grandmother, so was I. From six months old, I was raised by my grandmother, so I have old-fashioned skills. Please know, as I stated before, that I am doing well, and this too shall pass. God won't give us more than we can bear, and he chose me because he know what I'm made out of. As always, I have always, I have learned from this and would certainly use this as a teachable moment. Therefore, one moment out of my character does not and will not define me, because those who know me, know me, and those who didn't know me, I think you guys pretty much know me now. I look forward to conducting the business of our school district, and most importantly, supporting the students, teachers, staff, and parents of Richland 2, educationally and with love. Thank you.
Dr. Carson Parker? Dr. Carson Parker?
First, I'd like to thank Colonel McLam for your comments, your inspirational moment. I'm a granddaughter of a World War II veteran, granddaughter of a Vietnam veteran, wife of another Vietnam veteran, now wife of another veteran, Army veteran. I'm the oldest of three girls. I'm an Army brat. I'm an Army brat, so, but I just really appreciate everything that you said. In comments to, and Jamie Shad, Mr. Shad, I echo all of his comments. But I'm just going to say something. I'm going to say something, because this has really been on my heart. When we're going to criticize a board member, take everybody into consideration, not just that one. And we're responsible for our own actions, no matter what we do, no matter what the circumstances. We are grown, fully grown people, and we are responsible for what we do and what we don't do. Thank you.
Well, I had the honor of attending the retiree luncheon today, so I want to thank all the retirees. A lot of service was represented in that room today for many, many years that have made this district the great district, that we have the opportunity to lead as board members, and Dr. Davis as superintendent, and all the staff. So I want to thank all of them for their hard work, dedication, and certainly, they were all great leaders before we had the opportunity to ever be here or lead in the way that we do. So thank you to all of them. That was great. I do, you know, I do want to reiterate that I am a board member, and when a policy fails, even though I may have voted the opposite way, I will abide by the majority of the board and go by the way the board wants to. And so, so I will stick with the majority of the board on that issue. Hopefully, we can bring this back up, but if not, then I'll, I'll go with that direction. So thank you all. It's been a marathon night, so I'll leave you with those comments. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Dr. Holmes?
Good evening. I just want to say that harassment is really real in this room tonight. I see how my vote kept on not coming up. I think my board members are harassing me. I think I need to make that statement publicly. All jokes aside, I'm just kidding. They're treating me like the new kid on the block. But what I wanted to actually say, though, is tonight that this has been a very interesting ride for me, being the new kid on the block. It's kind of like being a little bit baptized by fire, so to speak. But you know what? It's like the anvil on, you know, the anvil is a piece of metal that you hammer on, and the hotter it gets, the harder it gets and the stronger that it gets. I think I'm kind of like the anvil. You know, we can all go through the fire together. But what, one thing I would like to say to my fellow board members is, because I'm coming in with fresh eyes and I'm new, I'm calling for all of us, all of us, to all get along. I think that's imperative, because we are on this board for the work of children. I got on this board for that. I'm going to stay on this board for that. As you get to know me, it is what it is. I call it like I see it. And so one thing I'm going to call tonight is, is that I would like everybody on this board to hold hands and sing kumbaya, because we all have to work together. We really do. We've had differences, we've had disagreements, and people are human, some right, some wrong. But I always like to say to people, you need to always look at yourself first. It's easy to sit back and make judgments about people's behaviors and how they act and things that happen, but what would you do in certain situations? You know, it's easy to say what you would- You know, it's easy to say what you would and wouldn't do, and I've done that also, and we've all done that. But at this point, it is what it is. These things have happened. We're here, we're still here, and we're still here to do the business of the district. And at this point, I'd like for all of us to hold hands and sing kumbaya and get on with the business of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, to our, our parents and our staff, all the committee folk who stuck it out this late. Richland Two is celebrating our Black History Month honorees with the reception and program on Monday, February the 25th at 6:00 p.m. in the R2I2 Conference Center. The program will feature students, local exhibitors, and performers. Please join us as we celebrate our honorees and their contributions to Richland School District Two. Attention to all the relatives selling houses in our district, we invite you to join us for our annual Sold on Richland Two Realtors Breakfast. You will walk away with great information to share with your home buyers. For information, call our Executive Director for Strategic Partnerships at 803-787-1910. Parents of our future students, make sure you visit the website to find out about the 4K application process going on now through April the 5th. Our Center for Child Development is holding information sessions in February and March to help parents with the application process. As you know, Monday is February the 18th, is President's Day, so there will be no school for students and for teachers. And I would like to simply end with this. I shared this earlier today during our honoree luncheon, that family means putting your arms around each other and being there for one another. Blood and DNA makes you relatives. It is our bonds that make us family. Tonight, we celebrate the successes of both students and teachers. We conducted the business of the board and the business of the people. We have a lot to be proud of, because we are a premier family. Our students are working hard toward their goals, and our parents are engaged and supported. Our teachers are committed and dedicated. Our administrators are caring and innovative, and our board is focused, passionate, and compassionate, as they go about the duties and responsibilities. So today, we collectively will unbow our heads and hold them high and continue to strive to be the premier school district, period. Happy Valentine's Day.
I would say ditto, since I'm last, but since I have been maligned again tonight, let me make sure that I share, we all get emails. It's a part of our job. We get emails, we get phone calls, we get texts. I would never share anything disparaging about any of my board members. I was raised a certain way as well. I would never be that unprofessional. People who email us when we're all emailed, I email them back. Doesn't mean that you email all the board members and you explain to them anything that they may not be sure about, but I would never display that about any of my board members. I would never display that level of unprofessionalism. I hope it's the last time I'll have to say that. It looks like I'm going to have to say it at every board meeting, so I will. At any rate, thank you, Colonel McLam. Mr. Shad, you pretty much included everybody. I think your comments were the longest, so ditto, Mr. Shads. I've got written here, Center for Achievement, and all these people that came here tonight. For the folks who are in this room tonight, as I always say, you have better things to do, but you chose to be here with us, and I thank you for that. And let me just be, just be clear, too, since it was brought up. I get calls about people's tone of voice, about their unprofessionalism and, and the things that they do and how we're mismanaging money. First of all, this man is the leader of the, of the district. Board members don't cut checks. Board members don't sign off on checks. Our superintendent is running the district, and we support him. And by supporting him, we support each other, we support teachers, we support administrators, we support our students. We had a student who spoke tonight who talked about how she didn't feel good about negative comments about bullying and, you know, singling people out, but it still continues. So I guess I'll have to continue saying this every board meeting. I apologize to waste your time. Thank you, Dr. Davis, for your comments about our being focused on the bond referendum, on African-American history, where we're going to all these schools throughout the district, and we're reading books about policies that make sure that teachers get paid and that schools are safe and that students are safe. We have a lot of work to do. So when we're dealing, when we're having to deal with personality skirmishes, it's a distraction. That is a distraction, when we're having to deal with personality skirmishes. So for the people who are here and focused on the work that needs to be done, for the end user, which is the student, thank you for that. We won't stop. We won't be deterred. We will continue focusing on the 28,000-plus students who are educated in our schools, the parents who support them, the superintendent who runs the district, the executive staff, the support staff, people who feed our children, cut the grass, everyone who works in this district, that's what, that's what our job is about, setting policy that makes Richland Two work. So for everyone who is in this room or listening electronically, thank you very much for supporting our children, either directly, indirectly, or just vicariously, because it feels good. But bless you. God bless all of you, and have a good night. Can we get a motion to, I'm sorry, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Bye.
So adjourned.